He had everything laid out just so we.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission Tuesday, July 16, 2019. Calling the meeting to order, I ask everyone to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Painter, would you please call the roll?
Member Friend.
Present.
Chair Keeney.
Present.
Member Lepper.
Present.
Vice Chair List. Member Rains.
Thank you. I want to thank the members of the public for coming out tonight. Appreciate you taking time, and we will reach a point in the public hearing that we want to hear from all of you, to hear your comments about the item 6.1, which I would imagine that's what most of you are here to talk about, or to hear us deliberate. At this time, I'd like to have a motion from the Commission to approve our agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Rains, a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to items on the consent calendar, the only item we have is adoption of our meeting minutes from the July 2 meeting.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to... Go ahead.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have no items pulled from consent calendar. At this time, we move on to item number three, which is items of interest to the public. This is the portion of the meeting where we open up for public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. The Planning Commission is not permitted to take action on issues raised under this item, but it's for informational purposes only. Is there anyone, any member of the public who would like to bring a topic, discuss a topic at this time?
Madam Chair, I request to be excused temporarily.
So granted.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners and members of the public. Michael Friend, resident city of Placerville. I'm here because I promised a number of individuals who contacted me over the last couple of weeks regarding the situation on Upper Broadway Grocery Outlet and general area. We all know there's been challenges in this area with homeless and people who are disadvantaged, but the concerns that have been raised recently are about open drug use and a lot of vagrants and camping in the area. And I understand that the city has some opportunities before, that it might be able to exercise, to work on this problem. And the city police department has put in a small station there. Unfortunately, I think the optics may be backfiring because when that happened, the public's expectation of what the quality in the area would increase dramatically, and it hasn't. And so it's creating this perception that, like, wow, why did they even do that? And it's worse. I'm not being critical of the police department or its efforts, but I think it's becoming worse. I'm going to recommend, I don't know if we have this, I talked to Pierre this afternoon on this matter, I'm going to recommend, and I'm going to raise my hand to participate, in a special task force to deal with this issue, because I think it is growing. And we've had challenges along the whole Broadway and Upper Broadway for a long time, and not laying fault at anyone's feet, but something needs to be done. I'm genuinely interested in the problem on a broader perspective, but I live in the general area, and so I am, of course, interested from that perspective as well. And since I was requested, and I promised that I would, I'm bringing it to the city's attention. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Friend. Are there any other members of the public who would like to mention something that's not on tonight's agenda? If you would, please state your name and where you live, for the benefit of the Planning Commission and for the audience.
Kirk Smith of Placerville. I just wanted to commend Mr. Friend, because that is an important issue, and it's something that needs to be addressed. I'd also point out that that issue is relevant, it's pervasive all around. You'll find some people who stay out right near the mustard and ketchup buildings. I found hyperdermic needles on the other side of Reservoir Street, just in walking distance to it. So that problem is attributed to petty crime and things like that. It's just been growing in the area. So I appreciate him taking the initiative to raise it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Any other members of the public that would like to bring up topics not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, communications. Mr. Painter, are there any communications we need to know about?
Yes. Since your packet delivery back last week, the city received numerous comments regarding item 6.1 on tonight's agenda. Copies of those comments received up to 4:00 p.m. today are part of the packet. They've been made available to you prior to the meeting. They should be up there for you. Those same copies were provided to the applicant, so the applicant and you both have that information. In addition, that same packet of comments received has been made available and part of the agenda packet, which is at the back of the room this evening.
Thank you very much. Yes, we had time to review the comments that you provided. Thank you very much. We have no presentation or educational workshop sessions tonight, so we'll move on to item six, environmental assessment, public hearings. And the matter is 385 Main Street, conditional use permit 19-01, and site plan review 19-01, Sour Dough &amp; Company. For the Commission tonight is this request. It is to operate a restaurant in the location of the former Central Coffee, located in our central business district. The business is Sour Dough &amp; Company. It's described as a formula business, and that's defined in our city code as a business with essentially identical, that is essentially identical to five or more other businesses' sites using the same or similar name or identity. Formula businesses are and allowed use in our central business district per ordinance 1597, which was adopted by the city in 2004. They're allowed with a conditional use permit. Tonight, the Planning Commission will review this proposed project, will provide due process to the applicant and the public through our fair hearing of facts, merits, and concerns of this project, then will deliberate in an open forum, and the Planning Commission will then consider taking appropriate action. The process for this is, we will ask for a summary from staff of the report. This will be followed by a presentation by the applicant. We'll then open up for comments from the public, and at the end of those comments, we'll allow the applicant to briefly respond, as they see fit, to the concerns that might be raised by the public. Then we'll close the public hearing and bring the matter to the Commission for deliberation and possible action. So with that summary, I want to turn it over to Mr. Painter to provide us with your summary of your staff report.
Thank you. I want to appreciate that detailed summary.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, before we do that, just a couple of disclosures, if I may.
That's right. I want to turn it over to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you. So first, for the public and for staff, I have to leave no later than 7:30 this evening to catch a plane. I tried to get the latest flight I could, and there were no early flights available, so I may or may not be here for the final vote, and I wanted staff and the public to know. Second, I have had ex parte communication with the applicant, that I can make part of the public record, or read into the record, whatever staff thinks is appropriate. And then, the only thing I wanted just to add to my fellow Commissioners, in case I have to leave, is regardless of what happens this evening, the action will more than likely be appealed. And so I think that the best thing the Commission can do this evening is to provide the best guidance possible for council, who will more than likely ultimately have to deal with the decision, and to rest and take a breath and take all the information in and do the best you can, but don't worry about it. It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Friend. And actually, it is my goal at the conclusion of tonight's meeting to, you know, possibly take definitive action, but your points are well taken and duly noted. Mr. Painter, Mr. Rebus, other Commissioners have also, may have had other ex parte communications. Should we go ahead and discuss that at this time?
Staff has no preference, so that would be at the pleasure of the Chair, but I think actually discussing ex parte communication is definitely appropriate. It gives a chance to air whatever the discussions were. Information that may be just available then, at the time being, with the individual Commissioner, it then gets announced to the rest of the Commission and the public, so that it's fully considered when you enter deliberations.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. I think it is my preference, because I think the result of those communications might be better understood in context after we've heard the staff report and from the applicant and the public. So we'll just put a marker on discussing ex parte communications for right now, and proceed with the staff report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, this request, to remind everybody, is before the Commission this evening, because it involves a request for a new formula business use within what's called the city's central business district zone. City Code defines a formula business as "any business with a proposed or exterior, or existing exterior design, appearance, color, signage, that is essentially identical to five or more other business sites with, using the same or similar name or identity." The request tonight is made by Dana LeBlanc. The use is proposed for 385 Main Street. The formula business use would occupy and operate on the ground floor of the Plaza Building, which is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Main Street and Stagecoach Alley. The business would be called Sour Dough &amp; Company, which is a food service business serving sandwiches, soups, salads, and beverage options. There are more than two dozen Sour Dough &amp; Company business locations. They're mostly in California, but there are a few in South Carolina. This business, with its more than five other business sites, is by city code definition a formula business. The applicant is not proposing exterior changes of standardized corporate architecture. None are proposed for the exterior of the Plaza Building. The request, however, would replace the existing central business wall sign, which is located on the east elevation of the building, which faces the Bell Tower Plaza. And the replacement sign would be a channel-lettered wall sign, providing the business identification for Sour Dough &amp; Company. And the sign would have a signed copy of, quote, "Sour Dough &amp; Company," and then underneath it, the words "sandwiches, soups, and salads." The text is red and white. The sign cabinet is aluminum, and the channel letters have internal illumination using LEDs. The sign dimensions would measure 30 inches in height and 14 feet 10.5 inches long. Total sign area in calculation would be little over 37 square feet. The proposed sign is consistent with the city's sign regulations for sign area and illumination, and is consistent with the guidelines within the city's development guide for sign design characteristics, sign placement, and sign materials. The applicant is also proposing interior space modifications, and these modifications would involve decor, which are common with other Sour Dough &amp; Company locations. The applicant's submittal information is provided as attachment to of staff's report, and it contains a completed application, applicant narrative, project description, and the sign elevation. Per city code, to operate a formula business within the central business district, or I'll abbreviate from now on, called the CBD, requires a conditional use permit and site plan review approval by the Planning Commission. The Commission must evaluate such a request for consistency with the city's general plan goals and policies, consistency with the city's zoning code, including design criteria established by city council in 2004, to address standardized formula business architecture and materials. And also, the Commission must evaluate whether the project is consistent with the city's sign regulations, and to consider input from the public during a public hearing. The Plaza Building was surveyed as part of the city's historic resource survey back in 1984, and per that survey, the building dates back to the 19th century. City records are, only come into existence beginning in the '50s, and so city's knowledge of tenants prior to 1950 is rather limited, but there are records that there was a bakery that operated for several decades on the ground floor of the, where the proposed formula business is proposed, mainly during the '70s, '80s, '90s, and early 2000s. That space, as we probably all know, was replaced by Central Coffee in 2005, and they operated for approximately 14 years. City permit records reveal that in '79, in 1989, and 2004, wall signs were authorized by the city and placed along the building's east elevation at the second-story level, where the now-closed Central Coffee Business has placed its identification sign, and where the Sour Dough &amp; Company request sign location is also proposed. On pages three and four of staff's report, contains applicable general plan goals and policies relevant to the request. These deal with the protection and to provide for the expansion of Placerville's commercial services sector, to meet the needs of both Placerville area residents and visitors, to promote the development and renewal of the downtown as a commercial center of Placerville, to assist the public sector in maintaining and improving the economic vitality of downtown through the enactment of land use policies and decisions supportive of downtown's primary commercial role, to promote architectural quality throughout Placerville, to encourage the restoration and reuse of older structures, which contribute to the character and sense of historical and cultural identity, to promote development of aesthetic and functional signage and reduce visual clutter, to allow only new signs that are appropriate in design and scale, while making adequate provisions for business identification. Staff believes that the request is consistent with the general, excuse me, the central business district land use designation, as well as the relevant general plan goals and policies regarding commercial uses in downtown Placerville, as well as city code. The requested formula business would use would be desirable, convenient, and beneficial to the public, in that it would be located in pedestrian-oriented downtown. It would serve local residents, visitors, and Placerville workers alike. The formula business would operate similarly to the former Central Coffee Business that operated, once again, on the site for over 10 years. Therefore, would not be detrimental to the surrounding property. As mentioned, the standardized signage is the limited outward expression for this proposed formula business, and as analyzed in staff's report, the request would be consistent with the intent of the central business district land use designation, as well as applicable land use goals and policies of the general plan and the site plan review design criteria. Findings necessary to support the conditional use permit and site plan review requests can be made. Staff also believes that the addition of one wall sign that would replace the existing wall sign would not have a significant environmental effect. The request, therefore, would be categorically exempt per section 1506A, number three, under the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. So this is not the first formula business request within the central business district, or CBD, since the amendments to city code back in 2004. And, once again, those amendments had to do with formula business design criteria and the requirement for a conditional use permit. A few months after the ordinance went into effect in 2004, Quiznos Sub applied and was approved to operate under conditional use permit at 545 Main Street, which is the building adjacent to us to the west. That building is called the Robert Hook Building. They operated for, between 2004 and 2008, and upon closure, Mr. Pickle's Sandwich Shop, also a formula business use, took over the space and utilized the existing formula business conditional use permit, and operated their formula business until February of 2010. This conditional use expired six months after they left the site, so that was late 2010. Staff report, as I mentioned earlier, includes public comments received up to the July 11 distribution date of this report. However, since that distribution, the city has received numerous comments, and those have been copied and made available to you tonight. Copies have been made available to the applicant, and also to the public back in the back of the room with the agenda packet. Chair Keeney, the applicant is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Painter. I want to thank you also for your thorough analysis and a solid report in your presentation, summarizing the facts and giving us a little perspective and history on this. At this time, I'd ask the Commissioners if you have any questions of staff, and at this time, I'd like you to focus your questions on the staff report. If you have questions about the project, proposed project, please hold those until the applicant has had a chance to present. Commissioner Rains?
Well, I have some questions on it. First of all, I've lived here 43 years, and I can't remember how many city council meetings I've been to, and I forgot that, you know, this is a historic building from the mid-1800s, and is listed in the historic resource inventory. I think that's important to remember. But at one time, the city had a historical advisory committee, and that historical advisory committee turned over all those duties and responsibilities to the Planning Commission. So I want the Planning Commission to remember that not only the Planning Commission, we're also the historical advisory committee for the city. I do have a couple of questions on your analysis. On page four, under community design element, I'll let you guys turn to the page. Goal I and goal J. It says to promote development of aesthetic and functional signage and reduce visual clutter, and contribute to the character and sense of historical and cultural identity. I probably am a little bit concerned that this bright red sign does not reduce visual clutter.
Commissioner Rains, you have a, I want to take a presentation from the applicant, and I think maybe your concern maybe should be raised during our deliberation, after we've heard more presentation of the facts. So at this time, if you have a question regarding the staff report, please feel free to ask Mr. Painter and Mr. Friend.
If I could support Commissioner Rains in the question, I mean, I'm struggling with the reconciliation of policy I, as well as color selection should demonstrate harmony and continuity with the colors of the building, and then further, bright, bold, glossy, non- earth-tone colors discouraged, and so staff has approved this. And so I think the question is to staff, if I understand it, I would like staff's response as to how the proposed signage is not in conflict with those elements. Commissioner Rains, if I'm, I don't mean to be speaking for you.
No, you're fine. I'm a new kid on the block, so I want your expertise.
I anticipated, that was my question, because I am having trouble reconciling the proposed signage in the bright red with several design elements as presented in the staff report and as required, and I'm interested in hearing staff's position on that.
And is that essentially the question you had, Commissioner Rains?
Well, I have three. May I state my questions, and then the staff can do what they want? Or what would you prefer?
Sure. Go ahead and ask your questions.
Well, again, I read the definition, and this definition is not only in the staff report, but it's also in that ordinance, the 1957 ordinance. It's the same thing. And again, is, you know, the color, I'm concerned about visual clutter. That's my issue. Okay? Not detrimental to existing properties. Well, you can't see existing properties if all you see is a bright sign. On page five, under colors, for those of you who want to turn to page five, okay? And I'm talking about item G, the building design. Colors are contrary to the city's historic small-town character, as they need to be earth-toned in lieu of bright, glossy, or reflective colors. The building design says color should be harmonious to site and surrounding area.
But Commissioner Rains, there's not a change in color proposed by the applicant. The exterior change is limited to signage only.
I'm talking about the signage.
Okay. And so can you, I'm not seeing a question. I don't want to cut you off. I think your points are quite valid, but I think I prefer to have that discussion when we bring it back for deliberation. And at that time, we could ask for further clarification from staff. I think I'd rather have the, as much information before us, before we do that kind of deliberation. Do you, do you see where my concern is?
I defer to the Chair.
Well, thank you very much. Do you have any other questions about the staff report, definitions, or anything else in the staff report itself?
I obviously disagree with some of the commentary in the staff report.
That's perfectly within your purview, and I, you know, appreciate diversity of opinion. Do any other Commissioners have questions at this time?
I have, so I have two questions of staff, and I'm going to go back to what I just stated. I would appreciate staff's explanation or position regarding the proposed signage, and the red and the bright, versus the various design elements that are listed throughout the staff report, because I believe there's a conflict. That's one. Second, we did receive communication late via email, and in this communication, it specifies that not only is this a formula business, but it's a formula business with fast food, and apparently there's some other code that prohibits formula businesses that do fast food from being at this location. When I went through the staff report, I had some comfort that, okay, the request is not prohibited. They still have to go through the conditional use permit process, but it's an allowable request. But now it's being conferred to us, and I don't know if you have access to this, and I hope that staff has the ability to look it up, but if it's not only a formula business, but also fast food, it's an and, it's a connection, then it's prohibited. I didn't see that in the staff report. I did not see that in the ordinance, so I can't speak to whether that's true or not. In your staff report, Andrew, you talk about Quiznos and Mr. Pickles, both of which are formula businesses for sure, both of which are also fast food, both of which were approved, and neither of which created any kind of concern from the public. I realize they're not the same special place that Centro is by the Bell Tower, because I do think that has a higher level of scrutiny, frankly. But can you please speak to that, to those two issues? The fast food component related to formula business, and also how the signage is not in conflict? Those are my specific questions, Madam Chair.
Which one would you like first?
I defer to staff.
Okay.
I have till 7:30.
Okay. Let's talk about the signage first. It was staff's opinion that after reviewing the signage, and yes, the sign will have white and red lettering, the extent of that red and white lettering is on the sign itself. Now, what you may not be aware of, the staff report didn't provide you what the applicant's maximum amount of sign area could be. It would be two square feet for each one lineal foot of their business frontage. They could have approximately 65 to 70 square feet of signage on the wall. From staff's perspective, the reduced scale of that sign, and appropriately scaled on the building, and the limited nature of the use of the red and the white, staff believes that that use, and that minimal use, is consistent with the design characteristics that are covered in the staff report. This, go ahead.
No, keep going. I'm listening.
Okay. So the second question...
Okay, well then, if you're moving on to the second one, then, so then, but that's going to be then up to the Commission to decide whether or not we agree with that.
Absolutely.
This would, Madam Chair, this would also get to my ex parte communication with the applicant. I did ask them if they were amenable to possible design signage changes from the Commission, and they said, yes, they would be amenable to that. So that's part of my ex parte communication.
Well, that actually ties into a question I had for the applicant, so any further questions at this time?
Well, I have, I have a second question pending. Well, I have, I have the second question pending.
Oh, go ahead.
The other part of my ex parte communication, just from disclosure, is that Mr. Bagley, who is the point of contact, I've had a business relationship with him years ago when he was managing at the Sequoia. So just for matter of disclosure, I know Mr. Bagley, and we've done business together before. So my second question dealt with, oh, the communication we received regarding the fast food component, which I think is even a little bit more of interest.
Well, probably the best way to respond to that question is the enumerated listing of the uses that are permitted within the central business district zone, or CBD, a formula business is stated as such, the definition of which is, I read earlier in my oral testament, which is any business does not specify the subcategory of a business. So it could be any business that has five or more similar appearance.
Right. I agree, but apparently there is some language, and it wasn't presented or provided to us in our packet. There's language, and it could be wrong, but it's been brought to my attention, so I have to bring it forward. There's language that says, "A business that is classified as formula," which is, clearly is, okay? "And is fast food. And if those two conditions exist, that type of business is prohibited."
Did you see, I hate to interrupt, but this is a bone of contention, and did you find that? Because I searched through the zoning codes, and I could not find that.
That was just sent, that was just sent to all of us by email.
Well, and I'd just like to get to the point of that. Is it prohibited in our?
My question to staff is, does that condition exist? I'll take some time to read, because they cited the code. I haven't had it, because it came so late, I haven't had a chance to look it up, but I had a telephone conversation with the individual who said, "This is also in the code." Now, I don't know if it is or not. If it's not, it's no big deal, then this is an allowed, an allowed application, and we can move forward and decide what we want. If it's outright prohibited, then I don't know what the planning commission, what our discretion is. And so I'll spend some time looking through the email, and perhaps after, after the applicant presents, if I can cite it, I will, but beyond that, I'm asking a question.
Yeah, I think that would be, I've had the same concern, and I know that that is also a concern of members of the public. I just wanted to state that, you know, I did my research. I could not find that.
I couldn't find it either.
And so it is perplexing, and I'm sorry, as, can you respond to that conundrum?
I don't know the code section that they're referring to. They did not provide that source, but I fall back to the definition of a formula business, which uses the adjective "any." It's, it does not distinguish any business, no matter what you want to call it. If there are five or more such business sites elsewhere, then it is considered a formula business.
There's no dispute about that. That's not disputed at all. There appears to be a, is it conjunction? It's been a long time since I watched Sesame Street. Formula business and fast food supposedly is in the code, and if those two conditions exist, that type of business is prohibited. That's what I've been told. I don't know if it's true. I'm trying to, I mean, technology is what it is.
We have another comment from Commissioner.
My question around that would be then, what qualifies something as fast food versus takeout versus sit down? I guess I would have questions around what the classifications, then where the lines are that makes it fast food versus makes it takeaway versus, you know what I mean? That's what I'm a little unclear of then, yeah.
I have another question.
Another question from Commissioner Rains.
This ordinance was 2004. That's 15 years ago. Have there been other ordinances since then that have modified or changed the requirements for the historic downtown center, center of the city, that might have relevance to this?
I don't think that would have relevance to this. There have been changes related to residential units and what we call supportive housing, transitional housing, has nothing to do with formula business. That's the ones that come to mind. There were changes to the city code in response to our requirements under state California housing law.
Okay, so nothing to do with fast foods, our formulas, then? There's been no ordinances passed restricting what can be used in our historic downtown area?
Yeah, I don't, I can't think of any, no.
Okay, any further questions? And I do want to apologize, especially given that, Mr. Friend, your time is short. I just really felt like we needed to focus our questions rather than
No problem, no problem at all.
Kind of moving into deliberation, particularly before we've heard from our applicant.
Looking here from the applicant, for sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much, and I do apologize if I was a bit rude to you. So that was, thank you very much, Friend, and it is going to be a lively discussion. But at this point, I would like to invite our applicant to the podium to give us a presentation about your proposed project. Good evening.
Good evening. It's kind of awkward, because some of the audience is behind me here, so they're not going to see the expression of what I need and want to say and need to share about this business opportunity presented to Placerville. So bear with me, I might turn around for a while and kind of talk to the crowd.
All I ask is that, you know, when you do turn around, if you could, please continue to speak into the microphone so that everyone can hear you, especially some folks may be a little hard of hearing, and so I just appreciate your efforts in that direction.
Well, very good. I just want to take a moment, because I've spent a fair amount of time, I was up most of the night, kind of listening and reading comments that were presented through social media, through the newspaper, and it's great to hear people draw together and whatever side of this issue they're on, present themselves. I thank you all for that, for being a part of the process. That's what makes us a good country, I think, right? And important. So I appreciate you guys being here tonight, all of you for showing up. There is some misinformation out there, and hopefully tonight, I can take a moment to clarify some of the things about the project, about myself. There was certainly a lot of clarification needed on the comments I was reading on the social network, which is not uncommon for things to get skewed when you don't have full information. And so I'll do my best to present tonight in the way that help you understand this project and who I am. First off, there were comments made about me being an outsider and just sort of trying to find my way into the communities for this business. That is no farther from the truth than can be imagined. I raised both of my sons here. My son's an Eagle Scout, was part of Troop 49, or Troop 59 here in Placerville, Diamond Springs area. I was a scout master. I've lived here 30 years. I was a big cut when I first moved to town. I owned two businesses in Placerville back in the 80s. I worked for Sam's Town. Been around this area many, many years, so I have a long history here. I have a family here. I have many, many friends. I've eaten at these restaurants for years. You have great food in Placerville. I'm really happy to say that. And so I would, I just want to bring another option to that. So that said, I wanted to dispel the idea that I'm an outsider trying to come in, or that Sour Dough &amp; Company is an outside company. I just was astounded at some of the numbers that were presented and the perception, and perception's 90% of what we think and feel, I think. I read a number that was 33,387 Subways, and we're next. And on that particular posting, they had a map, and the map had 15 of the, at that time, Sour Dough &amp; Company stores. To put that into perspective, that was .07% of the amount of stores that Subway has. We are not a Subway. We spent considerable amount of time, well, at least the staff has, we have some staff here from Sour Dough. I'm just introduced to this company, but I am thrilled to bring this to Placerville, quite frankly, because we have one of the top chefs in Northern California providing our food and menu offerings. This is not a Subway store, I guarantee you. It's not a Quiznos, and it's not your average sandwich shop. And so a lot of thought and energy has been given into developing this model. I want to take just a moment to talk about my selection of the building and why I want to do Sour Dough here. First off, I love the community. As I mentioned, I've had businesses here, raised my kids here, I have friends here. I play music here on a regular basis, have for many, many years, at some of the local venues. I've even played in this hall through the years, so a long history. So I'm kind of getting off track, because I had very little sleep last night, so if I, meander, guide me back on track. The idea that I'm bringing this to Placerville is because I researched, what are the best companies, what are the best opportunities for this little town? I think we need growth. I see it. I work with hundreds of businesses and have for the last 14 years in my full-time line of work, and I see over and over businesses failing for a number of reasons. One is capitalization, one is economies of scale. What does that mean? Economies of scale is where you have buying power to survive difficult times, and that's a challenge for most small businesses. Now, I've owned other restaurants, I've sold them, but as I learned, every dollar that minimum wage went up cost me $30,000 a year in my one business. And that's only in hard costs for labor. That doesn't include the food costs that go up as wages go across the board. These are important factors for small businesses and small communities to consider. How do we thrive? How do we grow? How do we help one another? That's really my goal. I'm not here to just bring my business into Placerville and destroy this architecture and this wonderful little town. I really thought this out, and so this is the right business for Placerville. Now, why that building? Economies of scale, location, 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 right? If you don't get yourself placed right in business, you may shut your doors way earlier than you ever imagined. And so when this opportunity arose, I said, "That is a good building for Placerville." Anyone probably in this room would agree, that is the most iconic spot in Placerville, and we want to represent it well, and I absolutely believe we will. Sour Dough &amp; Company, community-oriented, locally-based. El Dorado Hills started, I think, 2014. I'll let David talk a little more about it and give you some details, but we're community-based. We sponsor vaultanes, we sponsor churches, we do civic events. I want to bring activities to this town. I've got a lot of connections, and I mentioned at the PDA meeting, I worked for Sam's Town, if you guys remember Sam's Town, worked for Sam Gordon, who is one of the most amazing entrepreneurial spirits I'd ever come across in my life, other than the owner of Sour Dough &amp; Company, who's here tonight, the most amazing entrepreneur ever within 40 years. Sam had the unique ability to bring business to El Dorado County in big numbers, and he did it by relationships, and he had many, many relationships down in Sacramento, up in the hills. And what he did well was he could bring people together, and he did it through events, he did it through marketing, and he was working together with community. And that's really what I want to do here, is that I want to get on the PDA if I can, and I want to talk about these issues, and I want to work through them, and not sit there and try and destroy each other and beat each other up. I'm going to speak to some of that in just a minute, but keep that in mind as we go through this discussion tonight. Hopefully, I've cleared up some misinformation about me. I was concerned about something that came up after I had presented all my materials. I had been told that I had to present my materials all in the packet by the 11th, and on the 12th through the 15th, multiple emails and letters had come in, and I had no chance to define myself around that information that was coming in. And one of them was a map of the community, one of them was another petition, many, many letters. I went through the map, I spent, like I said, late last night going through this, and they had highlighted specific businesses within the district, and they might have this map presented over here, I don't know, but this map represented businesses that had signed in favor, or I should say against my petition, or against my project. I identified last night specifically seven businesses that had signed my petition, and that was posted with the city. And then I started looking at the names and how they were listed out, and many of these names were employees of these businesses, because I know many of the owners. And I thought, really? What is that about? I fully challenged that legally and forward in front of you, that this is misinformation given to the public, telling the newspaper that 70% of the people in the downtown district are agreeing that they should not have my business. I didn't even get a chance to go see all these people to get their opinion about that, and I think that's wrong. So I really think, being that I have seven of these businesses that I can prove signed it, we need to not consider this map as accurate and valid information. I present that to you. I'm dismayed by the lack of integrity around this petition. At least seven of the owners of this had have signed my petition. There were two letters posted to the city prior to the posting deadline, and there are probably over 30 now in just two days, and that's because people went out and formed another petition. So I ask that you consider that in your assessment of what's going to happen with this business, but it doesn't deter me. None of that does. If I love this town and I want this, I'm going to fight for it, just like anyone would fight for what they want. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Is there?
May I invite?
Yes, and there's more to the presentation.
Yeah, my name's David Bagley. I'm the Director of Operations for Sour Dough &amp; Co. I used to be the chef and general manager of Sequoia for 10 years. So I know Placerville quite well. My grandfather built this building back in the 1960s, and so I'm connected to Placerville myself, but I'm mainly here to just clarify a lot of stuff about Sour Dough. Number one, what is the definition of fast food? If getting your food fast is fast food, then fine. If it's what it's made from, what it's made of, and how it's made, we're not fast food. As a matter of fact, we're less fast food than probably 40% of the restaurants that are full-service in your town. We don't use prefabricated products. Yes, the meats come in cooked, the deli meats, but they're made to our specifications. No antibiotics, no hormones, humanely grown, I mean, it's the best you could possibly get, and that's who we are. So fast food is definitely not who we are. We don't have a drive-through, but we do serve our food fast, because we consider that service. People only have a certain amount of time for lunch. The more time we give them to enjoy their food, the better the food tastes, the happier they are. We are all about quality. We are all about service. And, you know, I've even talked to our lawyer today, because we've had people compare us to, say, we're just a Togo's and a Subway. That's on the verge of defamation. We are not a Togo's. We are not a Subway, all right? We don't do anything like they do it. We are nothing like that. That's like saying a Hugo is a Mercedes-Benz is a Ugo. I mean, it's two different worlds. We are a community-based restaurant. We will develop ourselves to fit the community, however you guys would like that done. Our original restaurant in El Dorado Hills, in town center, doesn't have the sign that we have on most of our restaurants. It's a wooden sign that is frontlit, because that's what the town center required. So we are not against. You don't want, you know, if you don't want it backlit, if it definitely can't be, now we don't want to be held out with the guy across the street having the sign just like the one we have, and, you know, then we can't have it, because we're a, you know, a formula restaurant, you know? I mean, we shouldn't be held on a different signage requirement. But, you know, if you guys want something toned down, we're more than capable and willing to do that. We've done that in a lot of our different, you know, we go into different communities all over the place, and we have to convert it. We have no plans on changing the outside of the building. We even, when we talked about the patio stuff out in the front, which was already approved for Centro, we were going to utilize the same look, you know, there was some concerns about our furniture. I sent my designer straight to the city and said, "What do you want? Let us know. We'll do it, if that's what you want." We're willing to convert to make sure that we fit into the community. Are we a group? Yes, we are. That group, we use our groupness for buying. We also use it for brain power. People who are doing things more successful in certain areas, that information becomes a part of our system, and when it becomes a part of our system, the whole group benefits from it, and they become more profitable, and that's what we're about. We're a support system for our people. We're not Subway. We're not Togo's. We're not McDonald's. I mean, if you wanted to compare a fast food to us, the closest thing to us would probably be In-N-Out. But even In-N-Out is more fast food. food than we are, so. But, that's who we are. So, if you have any questions about the system, about the design, if there's anything I can answer right now while I'm standing here, I'm more than happy to...
Okay, and is that, then, do you have any other portions of your presentation?
I'm done with my presentation, other than that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have questions for applicants?
I do, Madam Chair. I'm going to go first only because, again, I'm worried about time. And, Mr. LeBlanc, is it?
LeBlanc.
LeBlanc, okay. So, appreciate your presentation. Appreciate Mr. Bagley's presentation. Good to see you again, Mr. Bagley. I have to say that when I, I didn't know anything about your company, and when I saw the agenda item, so I immediately looked you up, and actually before I did that, what popped into my head frankly was San Francisco and Minor 49er, okay? The whole history, I think, of what the historic district is. And then I went and I looked, and I saw a number of your different locations, Vacaville, El Dorado Hills, I think Elk Grove. There were some others, and there was some variation in the appearance of, the outward appearance of those different locations. And as David described the El Dorado Hills location, I think that was the one that stood out to me most. And my communication with David, which is now public record, was are you amenable to changing, you know, some of the outward appearance? Now, you're not going to change the building. I think that's great. I disagree with staff in terms of their assessment that the proposed signage and the colors and the type of signage is consistent with downtown historic and the various objectives that are outlined in the staff report. And if I were to approve the project, I would insist upon different signage and something similar to what El Dorado Hills did. Moving that further, and I'm not going to address the fast food issue because I don't know where that stands technically. What I've gathered from my little bit of reading on the phone, and I don't want to spend time on the phone because I don't think it's appropriate, is the argument is that it's, since it's not listed as an approved activity in the CBD, it's not allowed. I have to defer that to staff to sort that out. I'm going to operate on the assumption for my discussion that the application is appropriate and our action is appropriated, and it's not prohibited. So, I'm not even going to address the fast food component. And I agree with David's assessment in terms of what is fast food, and I don't consider what you're doing fast food anymore than I consider what some of the other great sandwich shops on Main Street and in the area are doing as fast food. But, so, I clearly could not approve the signage as proposed, and you're amenable, if I understand, to making changes to that, similar perhaps to what El Dorado Hills required with the downlighting, okay, on the facade as opposed to the backlighting. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, let me approach that. If you're downtown, just within two businesses away from that suggested or proposed business, is the Pizza Bene sign. Have you seen that sign?
I don't want to talk about that sign personally. I really don't. I know, a minute ago, you said you would fight for your business, and so, you know, this is, I mean, in terms of my vote, this is what I'm saying.
All right. So, all right. What I will say is that I will be more than willing to adapt the sign to what the city needs, and we'll address it that way.
I think it could be quite attractive. The other thing, the other thing I'm just going to suggest, and I don't know that I'd make it a condition, not that I'll be here in time to make it a condition, but I'm going to throw out the idea anyway. And I'm going to go back to what I just said about my image when I saw the Sour Dough &amp; Company and the historic component, and for you to allow your establishment to stand out even from your other establishments and to a corp, imagine, this is dry diggings. That's what Placerville is, dry diggings, right? No water to mine our gold, and that dirty miner coming into your shop to get a sandwich, right? I want you to think about the possible motifs that you could add into your business that could really make it historic and fit in and make it different, even different than your other stores. I'm just throwing that out. You're fortunate. I'm probably not going to get a chance to make that a condition or a vote on it, but I'm throwing that out because I think that would be a very, very positive thing. You could become a destination in Placerville with that kind of an approach.
I actually like that concept, yes.
So, those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner LeBlanc, did you have a question of the applicant or a question about the presentation?
No, not at this time.
Oh, no, okay. You said you wanted to wait until after...
I think I'd like to have some public comment.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Friend, do you have a question of the applicant about the project or what they're proposing to do?
Well, there's many things I have some questions on, but I don't know whether it's appropriate for me to ask them now or later.
Well, if it's a question that you feel the applicant has an answer for, as opposed to something that the commission needs to deliberate over...
Would you be amenable to down toning the color of the sign?
Absolutely, yeah.
To something more muted?
Yeah, I actually like his suggestion. That is making perfect sense because in my readings last night, that's exactly what I was capturing, was the idea of the miner and that they would store the sour dough yeast so that they could make their own breads.
Well, what I'm hearing is that we have a general agreement, and so that we can take some public comment because, you know, time is getting short, especially for Commissioner Friend. I think we may be on the track to develop a different condition, so when the commission deliberates after taking public comment, maybe we'll be able to formulate a change or just give some guidelines so staff can maybe work with you to get something that is appropriate and looks good at that sign.
Right, love to hear comments, yes.
Does that satisfy your concern, Commissioner?
It doesn't satisfy my concern. It doesn't satisfy my concern, but we do need to move on, and so I have other commentary, but I'll make them at the appropriate place.
Good. I think that's suitable. So, my questions that I had, actually, thank you very much for your presentation at this time. You can take a seat and relax. We will open this up for public comment. So, this is where we open up to members of the public. We ask that, for the benefit of the commission and for the public, we ask that you state your name, where you live, and if appropriate, if you are representing a group, what that group is. Our guidelines are to allow individuals three minutes to speak. If you are a representative of a group, five minutes is more appropriate, and so that we'll try to keep to those timelines. In the interest of time, if a speaker ahead of you has made your point, please feel free just to step up to the podium and state that you are in agreement with what was said. That way, we can kind of move along with our deliberation. I don't want you to feel like you can't speak out, but just in the interest of time, if you're in agreement, you're perfectly, it's acceptable for you to say so. I wanted to remind everyone that this is being recorded. That's part of why it's important for you to speak into the microphone so that we can hear now, and so your ideas are captured and being recorded. So, please, we have our first speaker. Good evening.
My name is Fran Duchamp. I'm from Pollock Plains. I don't represent a group. I represent myself. One of the things that is concerning me is that you really need to have a definition of fast food. Its correct name is QSRs, and they are definitely a QSR. When El Dorado Hills, and they keep talking about that, but they didn't tell you what it went through, San Francisco Sour Dough Eatery changed its name to Sour Dough &amp; Company, and both are QSRs. Now, where the young lady wanted a definition, basically what you want to do is you want to get that person out. So, if you take a picture of Tugo's...
I hate to interrupt. You're using a QSR?
Yes, Quick Service Restaurant.
Quick Service Restaurant. Thank you for that.
You do not need to have a drive-through. I don't know where that comes from. You do have drive-throughs that are quick-service restaurants, but the idea is to get the person through a line and out when it's pertaining to sandwiches. You could look at the setup of Tugo's, Subway, theirs. Subway's advertising was on calories. That means that you guys are using formula different than I would. A formula for a sandwich place is they have the same recipe for their sauce, or you go through a line and people are putting on different things, and you get to the end and you're out. They have a new tag word called the casual fast food. You have a couple of seats where you can sit down, but it's still fast food. So, when you're looking up your ordinance on fast food, and it is there, make sure that you look up QSR because it definitely is one. And then the second thing is that the sign, I just put up four wonderful pictures of historical pictures of that area. It was a meat market one time. It was a fountain. Do people really want to have their pictures? Because people come take pictures of this place all the time. I work on some of your events. A blaring red sign is not going to look really well in somebody's, you know, photograph. I personally don't believe that that should be in there. There's only a couple of blocks of this wonderful history. You know, put them up the street or something where Quiznos or wherever, but they're all the same. There's a whole list of sandwich places. They are all QSRs, including this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you step away, you seem to be someone who knows this ordinance that revolves around the fast food. Could you please give us the title, the section?
I do. There's other people that are also aware of it. The only reason, and they're going to tell you, the reason I spoke on QSRs is I worked for Subway. I was the money person. I did the, you collect the money and you do the forensic things with, you know, the cards that come in and stuff, and so I'm very familiar with the QSR. So, that's why I spoke on it.
My question is more, our city's zoning...
They have the codes and stuff for you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments.
And Madam Chair, just for the record, what's reported to me, it's the definition for fast food is under 10-1-4. Of what that's under, I couldn't tell you, but it's 10-1-4.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, fast food restaurants are defined in the definitions section of the city.
Yes, the definition of, I read the definition in our zoning court, but I'm looking for is this, the ordinance where it says it's prohibited. That's the information that I'm lacking.
There is no section that gives a prohibition to fast food in the CBD.
No, I guess...
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Sorry, we're interrupting public comment, and again, time is short, but I guess the issue is it's not an allowed use by right or by conditional use, so I don't know what relevance that has. That seems to be the issue. That may come up later after public comment.
Okay, well, I would just like to put a marker on that, and during deliberation, maybe we can come to a clearer understanding. At this time, I'd like to invite other members of the public up to the podium. Thank you. Welcome, and again, if you would give us your name, tell us where you're from, or if you're representing a group. Thank you.
My name is Heidi Meyerhafer. I'm here as a building owner on Main Street. I would like to request the three minutes that I have to read my statement, but could I have a couple of minutes to address some of the things that Mr. LeBlanc said?
Certainly.
Okay. So, I was at the PDA meeting on June 6th where Dana presented his idea to the Downtown Association. Thank you. He was given approximately 15 minutes to speak, and then he was, he received public comment from the members of our merchant community who were there at that meeting. The room was full, which was lovely difference from most of our meetings. Many merchants came who don't regularly attend. All of the merchants in the room spoke that night very respectfully to Mr. LeBlanc, saying it's nothing personal, and it is nothing against Sour Dough &amp; Company specifically. It is that we do not believe that this location is the appropriate place for a formula restaurant. I would like to also say that at that meeting, it was requested that the business owners be notified should this be moving forward to the planning commission. I received notice as a property owner at my home that this was moving on. The business owners were not notified by the city that this was moving to the planning commission. And the first notice I got was July 1st, 15 days ago. And then there was a, I took a four-day weekend camping, so I had 11 days to do the research needed to present what I thought was the opinion of, and what I believe is the opinion of most of the merchants downtown. The map I presented, I went over again and again. I have the petitions, and I've actually secured more. The petition is not, as Mr. LeBlanc stated, against sour dough. It is asking the signers to tell, the signers on this believe that they were asking the city to uphold the ordinances that protect the unique central business district. And you can see the petition, and you can see how it's worded. It was not against sour dough. It was, it was please protect our district. And I do have, and I confirmed it last night, I went over it I don't know how many times, that I have the signatures of the owners, not the employees. The employees, yes, are in here because they are also interested parties. I also have tourists, and I have local visitors, and I can tell you so many stories about the visitors on Main Street because I'm a talker. I talk to people that I see on the street, and I have had many conversations, and they come to Placerville because it is different. There's a feeling here that is different. They know they can get fast food, and they can get formula food in all of their own home neighborhoods. They come here for what is different. So, that's my address to Mr. LeBlanc's issues with me. I will support all of the data on there with my signatures. I'd like to now read my statement.
Oh, please. And are you, is this statement on behalf of your association?
No, I am not speaking on behalf, and I'll be very clear, of the Placerville Downtown Association. I will mention them because I do work for them, and as in my work, I am on the street a lot, and I have these conversations. Today, I'm here because I own a business or a building, and I was a business owner. Now, I am a landlord, and I'm a property owner, and I have concerns about my property and this unique business district. I'm the owner of 376 Main Street, current location of Matty Wags. I bought my building with the understanding that I was investing in a historic city. Knowing that the city of Placerville had placed protections in the central business district, I've been conscientious about what type of business would complement the city's unique historic character. As someone that is financially and emotionally invested in Placerville Community Business, Central Business District, it has been troubling to see the city's disregard of their own general plan and supporting ordinances placed to protect the downtown's historic Gold Rush identity that is the backdrop of the community culture and experience. The city of Placerville's documents repeatedly cite a commitment to the unique character of the central business district within their general plan, their zoning ordinances, and their streetscape plans. They say there's a commitment to protecting it. I'm not going to read that part because we've talked about it before. Business on Main Streets, businesses have worked very hard to create one-of-a-kind experiences along with creating a working downtown. The city of Placerville's Planning Commission is currently the steward of the ordinances that were put in place to protect the uniqueness of the central business district. Allowing a store that is a formula, clearly a formula restaurant, is not protecting the uniqueness of the central business district. Historically, the city of Placerville has maintained the image of the Placerville as a Gold Rush destination town. Placerville is unique not only because of its 1800s architecture, but because of its small individualized shops. This unique character would be adversely affected by the inclusion of formula restaurants. You know, you have this letter. I'm just going to tell you three of the conversations I've had recently.
Ms. Meyerhafer, you're up to six minutes right now, and I really fear letting one voice dominate our conversation, and I appreciate you sending your comments and...
Please note that the tourists, the locals, and the merchants do not want to see what they can find on any strip mall.
And we appreciate your dedication to the community. Good evening.
Chris Payne, Diamond Springs, but also I'm the president of the El Dorado County Historical Society.
Could you turn the microphone up, please, to your, I can't hear what you're saying.
Pull it up.
To your...
Pull the microphone up to you.
Point the microphone up.
So, you don't have a quality system like the Board of Supervisors has, where you can talk in any direction.
Please use your well-modulated radio voice.
Appreciate that.
You know, I don't need the mic. I could obviously project. I said that I'm Chris Payne of Diamond Springs, but I'm also the president of the El Dorado County Historical Society. I also am involved with a group called Conference of California Historical Societies. I also am involved with a group called Conference of California Historical Society, which is a statewide networking group. The reason why that's important is because we just awarded, the conference did, the ice cream saloon, our award of merit. And the reason why we were able to do that is because of the nature of the, of the building and also the nature of the, the business itself. If you go in there, it's like a mini museum with displays and a lot of, a lot of really historically related information that makes people like it and makes people wanting to come, come back. I think anyone on Main Street that kind of uses that philosophy is going to win. So when I hear the proponent saying that he would at least consider some of the changes that have come up today in this discussion, I appreciate that because I think that's what's going to make that place unique and make it a destination. You're competing essentially within the company between other businesses that are of a like nature, meaning they are Sour Dough and Company. They're, they're, they're competing against themselves in some ways. What's going to make this one unique over all the other ones? We heard about Eldorado Hills. Well, I also heard them say that they would consider changing the signs in order to be consistent along the lines of the discussion that we've already had today. Well, I would say that's an important ingredient in making this place unique, no different than what I said about the ice cream saloon, unique. Now, related to my involvement with Main Street, eight years, Placerville Downtown Association, my wife and I owned 327 Main Street for about 15 years. I know about Main Street, but also did two years as the president of the Placerville Downtown Association. It's not an easy job to do that. But I believe that the character of the city is not only those things, those tangible things that we've been discussing about buildings and signage, but it's the people who run the businesses that create the character. It's how well do they provide service? These are the things that I don't want you to forget about as a commission. It's got to be technically correct, though. Don't get me wrong. Technically correct is the most important thing. And then beyond that, it's who are these individuals and are they going to run a great business that's going to be a benefit to Placerville? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have someone else? Good evening. If you would, please state your name and where you're from and also if you're representing a group.
My name is Ruth Michelson. I represent myself and my business with my husband, which is Placerville Art Gallery. I'm the one person who submitted a letter that's in your packet that you got, you know, on time early last week. And I don't want to repeat that whole thing because hopefully you've read my letter. But what I wanted to say was that I think Mr. LeBlanc, I'm really sorry that he's turned it into something that's personal because as Heidi had said, on social media that I've read and I do follow and in our PDA meeting, we've all been very, very polite. We think he's a fine man, history in this town, children raised here, et cetera, et cetera. But there's a different issue here that's going on, which is I own my building. I've owned it for four years and I am a stakeholder in the downtown. I run a successful business and there are 80 people who are running their businesses. And I think you have to consider those 80 versus this one. And for us to have our successful business, as I said in my letter, I'll just paraphrase a little bit of that, that people come to our town, I listen to my customers, they come from Stockton, Modesto, Napa, the Bay Area, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, as an escape. To have something that's different than what their everyday existence is, we are a quaint historical town. And that is why my husband and I bought the building we did and created the art gallery where we have 30 local artists. So I'm not only looking out for myself, but all the artists in our gallery. And I think that if we start to dilute that, it will be just a slippery slope. And I think we have to recognize that we are a vibrant downtown and can't take that for granted. I travel and I see many rural downtowns that are ghost towns because they didn't have the right balance to draw people in. And we've become a destination, not just a place where you're passing through to go to Tahoe or down to Yosemite or whatever. People come here for the afternoon, the day, the weekend. We have fine restaurants downtown. We have fine lodging, bed and breakfast and nice stores. And so I think that's my main point is please think of us stakeholders who already are here and, and think of protecting what we've created. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening and thank you for all you do. My name is Vicki Christensen. I have a marketing, internet marketing firm and specialize in branding. I've been working with many of the merchants in Placerville and what I can echo and not get into again too much is we have a very solid brand that is marketable and has been marketed. It has evolved organically and if we are not true to that brand, we have nothing to market. I, what their ingredients sound amazing. It's wonderful wherever they are. It sounds like a wonderful restaurant. We have core values that we must pay attention to, our uniqueness, our history. Other counties are calling us and wanting to know how we got to where we are. Well, how we got to where we are is by listening to our core values and adhering to them religiously because once they're changed, we, we're just wearing the same dress that everybody else is. And people come here as a destination. We have a hashtag and a branding slogan that is come home to Placerville. Well, if we have the same thing that everyone else has, there's no, nothing to come back home to. We are not special anymore. So do the right thing, keep us special and unique. People will continue to feel like they are coming home to Placerville and have a sense of belonging to a gift that is all their own. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Danika Olivo. I live in Cameron Park, but I've lived in this area for 25 years. And some of you may know that we did, well, we are, my husband and I own a building in the city of Placerville, 643 B Street, which used to house Sequoia. And we are business owners because we have a winery. I feel so strongly about this situation because there's definitely two sides to it. But what I've been hearing tonight is that there's a way for these two sides to come together. I love what you said, Mr. Friend, about trying to include some of the elements of the history of Placerville in this location. It's a great location for it. Chris Payne also referred to it. I think it'd be a wonderful idea if you could maintain the history of Placerville in this location with a wonderful tenant. Because I keep hearing about people not wanting to come to Placerville and see something ugly. Well, it's very ugly to see an empty building. And going through a town as a tourist and seeing empty buildings because people can't make it is really, really unattractive. And it speaks very poorly for the town. So I would love to see a business like Sour Dough, who I understand are a wonderful company. I've never eaten their sandwiches, but I've heard great things about them. And I would love to see them take this location and make it into something that fits into Placerville. So please consider that there are other opinions. I have heard a lot of people have been pressured to sign petitions against this business. I've even heard of people from out of state who were asked to sign. So I do think that if you look at what's best for the most people and for the people such as the building owner, to get a good, strong tenant, the town to have a wonderful, strong business. And maybe someday, like Starbucks is known to have started in Seattle, maybe someday Sour Dough will have been known to have started here in Eldorado County. I think we should support a company that is starting in Eldorado County and making a wonderful show of their business and doing good business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Laurel Brumpf, I'm Eldorado County Chamber of Commerce. There's, there's been a lot of comments made about fast food restaurant versus not fast food restaurant, formula business. Formula business and as staff pointed out, Quiznos and Mr. Pickle were both on Main Street. Existing formula businesses on Main Street are River City Bank, Round Table Pizza, True Value and Health Mart, which is Robinson's Pharmacy. So there are formula businesses existing quite compatibly with the unique individually-owned businesses on Main Street. I have had conversations with part of the, the team for Sour Dough. I have eaten their sandwiches and their salads. I can speak very highly from my experience of the quality of their product. But, but what I'm, and I, and I have done the research, I have looked into this, it's an economic development issue from our perspective. This is a company that has a very strong and successful business model. To speak to what Danika commented on, for a business, for a building owner to know that they have a tenant that has a very strong and successful, successful business model to be their lease, to be their, their tenant in their building and have some assurance that they'll be there for a while, I think is a, is a good economic development protocol for, for, for Main Street, for, for Placerville. The comments that were made in the presentation by the applicant, I hear a lot of sure we will, a lot of cooperation. You want the sign to change, we'll change the sign. The comment about, Michael, the Commissioner Friend, that you made about their interior providing some historic value. The applicant said, I like that idea. So I'm hearing these folks saying they want to cooperate, they want to fit into the community and, and be a good neighbor and be a good company and be an asset to start Main Street. So I would, I also want to tell you that just because I don't like it, doesn't mean you have the right to deny it. Your policies and your regulations clearly spell out what can and cannot be permitted. And your staff is selling, is recommending approval to this project. So we would strongly suggest that you accept staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Eden Halbert and I'm a relative newcomer, having only lived in Placerville for about 12 years around here. That's not very long at all. It's a town I really love and chose very deliberately to move here. I'm a business owner with a home-based business within city limits. In addition to that, I am a member of Gold Country Artist Gallery, which is right next door to the building in question. I want to make clear, however, that I do not speak for the gallery. We discussed this and because it's a cooperative with approximately 45 members, we decided it made the most sense for each member to speak for themselves and communicate in any way they felt was appropriate. So I'm here only on my own behalf as an individual. I really appreciated the presentation from the applicants. There's obviously a lot of passion there, sincerity. I have eaten at their restaurants at other locations and quite enjoyed it. So I am happy to have them in the, in the larger community. However, I do still have a number of concerns about them going into that particular location, which is part of the central business district, but even more than that is really the heart of the central business district in its most visible spot, near the bell tower there. And therefore, I think kind of has a special burden on it to, to be, you know, to meet everything that we need our downtown to be. When I looked at the zoning ordinance for the central business district, one of the things it says is that this, they created this as its own unique designation in order to differentiate the downtown area from all other land use designations because of its unique character. And I really sat with that concept for a moment and I think that that is getting at the heart of what a lot of people are concerned about. There's, if you can have a business like this anywhere else off of Missouri Flat or, you know, wherever, in any strip mall, why in the world would you come downtown where parking is a little trickier and it's a little more crowded and, you know, it's not a, a quick sort of thing like going to Town Center, going to another strip mall. And so I think that a downtown, what, what is it that brings people here? What is it that makes it unique? What niche do we fulfill that can't be fulfilled any other place by any other type of business? The things that you get here are not what you get on Amazon and they're not what you get at the mall. And I really feel strongly that we do need to take very seriously that, that requirement and that goal of having downtown be a really unique place with unique businesses. Now, if there were a particular gap in services of some kind or a business providing something so necessary, then I think that's when you look at making exceptions. We have other businesses here providing similar, if you'll pardon that, I understand they are different, but, you know, providing similar services. So I'm not seeing the need. If this were going to remain empty for some endless period of time because there were no other applicants, that's worth discussing as well because I do agree with the Chamber of Commerce in saying that an empty storefront is, is, you know, a blight on a downtown. I, it's my understanding that that is not the case here. So given that fact, I would just like to register my feeling that I'm going by the ordinance definition itself as well as, you know, my knowledge of what makes a downtown a desirable location, both for me personally as well as all of my customers in my own business and the things that, you know, they, they stop for me.
I need to cut you short.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I appreciate your comments and thank you for, you know, being a part of our business community downtown. Yes.
Madam Chair, I regret that my hour has come and I'm going to have to leave. I would hope you wouldn't indulge me, just, just a comment before I go.
I, as long as you don't get too far into our potential deliberations, certainly.
No, 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 no. I'm simply going to read from page one of the ordinance, 1597. And I want to make it absolutely clear for the record, formula businesses are allowed in the central business district, period. They are allowed. Formula businesses are allowed. I've heard what I thought was confusion on that matter, they're allowed. But there is a process by which this body has to determine if the business as proposed is appropriate. And from page one, whereas the city council further finds that certain formula business establishments do not reflect the unique character of the community and the desired aesthetic ambience of the central business district, and that they offer standardized architecture, use and character identical to similar formula businesses located in other communities and thus cannot contribute to the established uniqueness of the central business district. If the applicant and this commission can condition an application that is contrary to all of those things and fits, and I think there's tremendous opportunity if the applicant is willing, then I think you could find probably a positive recommendation. But I think that is the test. And with that, I will withdraw and I regret that I, that I have to.
I am sorry that you won't be able to stay any longer. I appreciate your efforts on our.
I'm going to watch the video.
On our behalf. Okay, as Mr. Friend is exiting the building, is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on the matter? Good evening.
Hi. My name is Daphne Simmons and I thought I'd offer a different perspective because I'm not a business owner. I'm just a lover of Placerville downtown. I live down on Cedar Ravine and we walk downtown daily, I would say, my husband and I. And I agree, what we love about it is that it, it's unique and it has things that I can't get on Missouri Flat or Broadway. And that's what I think is vital and essence to the town at what makes it such a fantastic place. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the, oh, good evening.
Hi. My name is Maureen Bowklin. I am representing myself. I'm a resident.
I'm a resident of Placerville. I've been here about 10 years. I was really torn on this. I love downtown Placerville. You could probably find me five days a week down here and most weekends. I volunteer down here for most events that are performed down here. I love the fact that they are willing to maybe make some kind of historical design inside and to maybe not have that big neon sign. I think they are really willing to work with our town and with the people here and I think it would be a great opportunity. I didn't know which way I was going to turn tonight when I came in here, but listening to everybody and how accommodating they want to be, I'm going to say yes. I think it'll be a great opportunity.
Thank you very much for sharing your perspective. Anyone else from the public would like to speak to the, good evening. If you would please give us your name.
Sure, I'm Mark Simmons. I'm a Placerville resident, representing myself, following up after my wife's comment. Also, what I'd like to say in, from my perspective, first of all, being in business for a number of years and understanding that businesses can start off quickly and start off fast does not necessarily mean that they have a long track record of success. A formula restaurant that has been around since 2014 is admirable, but not what I would call longstanding, just as a point. Another thing being that there are, again, I echo the comment about a gaping hole in the area. There are other wonderful restaurants that serve similar, if not the same, but are similar services downtown that are owned by local folks, that are not part of a very quickly growing and expanding, probably franchise organization. If I'm wrong, correct me? Didn't think so. You're not a franchise at this point, but you have plans to be so. Yes, you do. So just want to point that out, that it's not really all that incredibly, there's not a unique aspect necessarily to either their food, in my opinion only, nor in their presentation of what it is they want to do. Downtown Placerville has a unique vibe and feel to it. We have friends and folks that come by and stay with us regularly and they comment on a regular basis how nice it is that they can drive by Missouri Flat and see, let's say, a Sour Dough and Company, and they can see those things within the city limits. They're close enough to go to, but when they come and park downtown, they are seeing a unique, vibrant, historically themed downtown, which is what this is, in my opinion. So those are a couple of points I wanted to point out. It's nothing personal, being a business owner, I understand business and costs of entry and issues all related to this. But I also feel that there is more at stake in relation to the unique component of the code, et cetera, that in my opinion, this type of a use isn't really quite meeting it. Last thing, comments made about accommodations that may be possible are not contractual agreements and they may or may not necessarily turn into what happens. So if the council is, commission is looking to move forward with something in any form, I would recommend from my part as a citizen, that it is well documented and agreed to beyond just a nice comment up at the podium when making a presentation. Nothing personal, that's just the way business works. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening Chair and Members of the Commission. Kathy Lishman, Placerville resident. I have to say, I have not seen one thing on social media about this. I know, I knew nothing about it. All I know is that I get emails from the city that there was a planning commission meeting and could look at the staff report. And so that's the only thing that I have done. And what concerned me is the sign. That's what I'm focusing on. The Centro sign blends in with the building. If you drive by during the day, it's still up there and it blends in with the building. And at night, it's very subtle and beautiful. And the Placerville news next door has a beautiful sign that blends in with the town. If you look at that section of town at night, it's very, it's very soft on your eyes and very pretty. The proposed sign is 37.2 feet and the sign on Centro is 21 feet. But if you look at where the letters are, 21 square feet, I mean, 37.2 square feet, 21 square feet. If you look at the letters on the Centro and the sign itself, only about half of the letters are part of the sign. So there's a huge difference in the sign. The one that I saw in the picture sticks out like a sore thumb. And that is, the bell tower is, that's, that area is the heart of Placerville. It needs to be something better than what's being proposed. And it's next to the iconic bell tower. And it's true, pictures will be taken with a big red sign in the back. Quiznos and Mr. Pickle were not in the downtown core. I consider Bedford to Sacramento Street to be different than the other parts of Main Street. How it looks at night, like I said, again, Centro blends in. I looked up the picture of the one in Eldorado Hills and the building kind of looks like a beach hut, but that's Eldorado Hills. And I don't think that we should even say that we want the sign that Eldorado Hills has because we need something that really fits Placerville. I'm not commenting on the business or the appropriateness of it, I'm just commenting on the sign. And a lot of the information that we can read from that talks about the character of Placerville and the historic element, it's in the building designs. Even the ordinance, 1597, that I signed in 2004, really talks about the buildings, but the sign is something different and special also.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Good evening.
Hello. I'm Samantha Hazelwood. I didn't grow up here, but I grew up in Petaluma. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with Petaluma, like two and a half hours away from here. Moved here about five years ago, right after I graduated high school. 23 now. And I just wanted to say, I wasn't prepared to speak, I've just been listening. I actually never really speak in public, so this is different for me. But I just wanted to say that Placerville is really, is unique. And as, for being 23, there's not really many places, since I've been growing up, that are still historic. I feel like it's all kind of fallen apart. I know Petaluma personally, I don't even like to visit my hometown anymore because the field where the fairground used to be, they totally just put in tons of chains, just bought out the land and smack dab a bunch of stores and there's just way more traffic and it's just, doesn't feel like home anymore, like where I grew up. It just feels like everywhere else. And I feel like it's slowly creeping up towards Placerville and I really hope that doesn't happen because, I mean, like it was said before, we're just going to be like everywhere else. And I feel like, yeah, there's an empty space at Centro now, but if we are creative, like a lot of the other shop owners, I know there would be a lot of other people interested in that spot with maybe a little more creative of an idea. That's what we're kind of known for. There's a Sour Dough and Co. that was just opened off Missouri Flat, which isn't too far. And I think that's the perfect room for that. And it's nothing against the business. I mean, we do own Main Street Melters. We're a sandwich shop. We really do thrive. A lot of people that I talk to love our business because we are different. And we're not worried about competition necessarily because we are really thriving and people pretty much go there just because we are different. But I just, something to consider, just to kind of, I don't know, just to keep it how it is. Because I am only 23, but I, there's very, not many places like Placerville anymore. It's kind of sad.
Thank you very much for sharing your perspective and we will try to keep your comment, as well as all the other ones, in mind as we proceed with our deliberations. Good evening.
Hi. Patty Farrington, Placerville resident. I would like to welcome any business there that would look to the interests of Placerville. Their business, our downtown is a business. And it's also more than that. We have to be very careful contractually to make sure that we look out for the interests of Placerville. And that whatever comes in there, whether it's Sour Dough and Co. or whoever, that we are protected, that our essence there is protected because that is the heart of Placerville. There are a lot of things that happen there that can affect a business. There's all sorts of times when Main Street is closed for all sorts of festivals and events. There's Davey Doc Weiser and his stagecoach. Any business that comes in there needs to have signed an agreement that they are okay with everything that happens there, that benefits Placerville as a whole. And I would just ask you to please look out for Placerville. Thank you.
Thank you for that unique perspective. I appreciate that. Anyone else care to comment?
When you know it, you come up here and...
Could you please pull the microphone a little closer to your mouth if you can, so we can hear you?
Yeah, if there's anybody else who wants to go up, I'd like it because I pressed the button and it went away from all the sections of law that I was going to cite. And I don't want to waste your time going through all that. You know, you press the key, you put your thumb there and bingo, it goes. But I had a whole list of sections that I think you should look at. So do you mind, excuse me, while I go back and try to find that?
Okay, could you give me some context of what it is you're going to discuss?
Yes. As Mr. Friend correctly said, this is going to be appealed, that's a safe bet, one way or another. The staff does great work, they know what they're doing, but they're not infallible. You know that from last year when you had some procedural issues raised here about that Terrace Street carport and the city council reversed it. So it's not always infallible and I think that the record, no matter how well it's done, leaves out an enormously large number of sections. You hear people say, "This is not a fast food restaurant." Look at the, look at your own ordinance, read how it's defined. It also says that the conditional permit has to be consistent with the objectives of the general plan. And what does that general plan says? It talks about downtown Placerville being all but sacred, it's part of the historic area. We had the staff do a wonderful job of bringing in a workshop a few years ago on historic preservation. They sponsored it. And what did the experts say? If you have actually a designated historic district, you find that the property values go up and you find that the sales tax revenue also goes up. I was invited because our family owns several properties on Main Street. My parents bought properties in town for over the course of the last 60 years. That's the relevance. The specific sections tell you about, again, doing so consistent with the general plan. That wasn't mentioned in the staff's brief. So I think those are important. There are a lot of sections and I just glanced through in the back, that submission, and a lot of those things I've just alluded to are there. Sorry, I don't have this to point out. I'd also suggest that what you have tonight, what it is and isn't. One, it is not about what you like or don't like. Nobody says, "This is a bad business." Nobody says, "These entrepreneurs are wonderful people, keep it up." Placerville Drive will welcome you. I'm sure Broadway has lots of people up there that'll help you out. That's not the issue. Likewise, one of the things that's really implicit in what you're doing tonight is you're selling the bell tower. Imagine one of the, and here's how. You have two of the most iconic images in Placerville that has people photographing it every day, the Hangmistry Building and the bell tower. Look at behind you that photograph, that illustration. Imagine what a great money shot. Right now, they have 39 businesses and a whole list of a bunch of more they want to do throughout the country. And imagine that, of all the 39, they're all in shopping except this one, which now could be marketed as the home of the gold rush, sour dough, God, you got unlimited marketing tools back here. So that's a real problem. And you've got a slippery slope you're going to go into. If you allow that, what's next? How about Taco Bell or the bell tower? I mean, we're going to get Starbucks, we're going to get, and when people talk about these things at the two ends of town, like Round Table Pizza and Bell, those were put in years ago, before a lot of these standards were put in. So they don't count. And then when someone describes River City Bank as a...
Mr. Smith, you're well over four minutes. Could you please wrap it up quickly?
Wrapping it up, to say River City Bank is a formula is forgetting the name branch, as in a bank branch. Likewise, people have said that Hangtown Hardware is a franchise when it simply pays 100 bucks or so a month to use the services of their supplier. Our grocery store years ago did the same thing with United Grocers. It's not by itself a franchise.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion and I want to invite the project applicant and your, or your representatives, if you would like to take a few moments to respond to some of the comments. You know, we've kind of been working around certain issues, but I want to provide you a chance to respond, so please do so.
Well, first off, I want to thank everybody for getting up there. It's not easy to sit and talk in front of people, so thank you for doing that. Very, very good commentation made by many, many people tonight and it's not, not taken to heart, so to speak. I understand the idea and the concept of historical and continuing to keep that pattern and path here. And that was, again, something I considered in the design of the building inside is, it's brick, it's wood, it's natural colors. It's, so, want to address that because there were some concerns about that. The signage, more than willing to work on, we discussed that at length. I didn't think there was anything that, that I hadn't heard before that I don't think that I take issue with. There were comments made that kind of covered some of the things I was thinking and I basically read through all the materials and I kind of reheard them all here tonight. So I think I've been able to capture the essence and the commentation. So I think I have no other further statements to make there. Does anyone on the team have some information?
Hello, I'm Steve. I'm one of the founders of Sour Dough. And it was great, you know, hearing the input. And the only thing I wanted to bring, it's good for everybody when you bring successful business into town because, you know, we're willing to, I got excited actually when you started talking about the gold rush and things that we might be able to implement into the space. And also to make it a cornerstone where it's going to be quite attractive, you know, to, you know, we're willing to go the extra mile to make sure that, you know what, we make it something that's special in Placerville. And the thing that we have, and even I know a lot of businesses are, it's a normal reaction, they don't want to see change, they're worried about what's going, but when you bring new business, okay, into town, other words, if you get a good tenant that's a good operator, it helps everybody. It drives traffic, okay? And our particular concept, our attraction is to the upper income level, actually, so, which is good for our stores, people that are coming in, because those people mostly, like subway customers, not our customer. That customer is a value-driven customer that's going just to get something cheap. Everything about Sour Dough is quality. Our build outs quality, we maintain the space, that front sidewalk that faces the corridor will be the cleanest you ever saw it. We're very, very meticulous. We understand that to be successful in business, in fact, we would, you know, I'm always telling all, and I've built hundreds of restaurants, I've been very successful in many different avenues in the food business, okay? So I do have a good understanding what, I've been in environments like historic places. You, you know, even I was in Greensville, which is historic in South Carolina. And believe it or not, Starbucks is in that area. But they don't, they packaged it well, they had, you know, they were sure the other tenants are already existing in there. People need to reinvest in their business. There's a lot of shops up... There's a lot of shops up and down this... That if I owned, I'd be redoing them. I'd be remodeling them. I'd be...
(noise)
Excuse me. Excuse me.[608.16][608.16](laughing) But anyway, you know, it should be... Everybody should get excited about rebuilding the downtown to make it something really special. And, you know, for starts, I can tell you, Sour Dough will be involved in the community. We'll be donating money. We're involved in everything in El Dorado Valley. The swim team, Taz, we're involved in that. We're one of the main sponsors. We're involved with the baseball teams. We're very community-oriented, and we want to make Placerville great also. We're from this area. We're not necessarily Danas from Placerville. We love El Dorado County. This is where we started our business. And we... I just hope everybody's open-minded, and I guarantee you, we'll make you all proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing and bring this matter back to the planning commission for deliberation. So the commission is to now deliberate on the facts that have been presented and discuss the merits and the concerns about the project, and then potentially take action on two things, the conditional use permit and the site plan review. And we've had a lot of input, especially on the site plan review. I'm going to ask the commissioners to keep their microphones on during this portion so that any comments you have, you know, can be heard by the public and are captured for our famous recording. And also, please strive to speak directly into the microphone. I know that sometimes that's a little difficult.
Only for short people.[711.44][711.44](laughing)
Sorry about that. Before I forget, I want to get back to that issue of what's known as an ex parte communication. That's a communication about the project outside of this deliberative body. Michael Friend stated that he spoke to the applicants, I believe, and at this time, I want to state that I did have conversations also. I spoke to several business owners in the Central Business District and numerous residents of Placerville as and some of our visitors to the area. And this was just to gauge their response, to gain some information from my own deliberation. And I also want to state that I did have a short meeting with staff to clarify some of my questions about the city ordinance and the goals that are relevant to the application we have before us. And also, we discussed a few administrative procedures. So that's what I would like to state for the record. And Commissioner Reins, I think you also had just a... And you don't have to tell us the content, just tell us...
Well, that's okay. I had two. Mr. Painter and I talked today because I asked him to define some verbiage and some words in this whole packet that I didn't understand. I wanted to go in knowing what is this and what is that, and he cleared up the picture. Not knowing you're going to ask this question, and I don't know this is relevant. My girlfriend and I walk from the post office to the police department every morning for two miles, and while we were yak-talking, I was yakking about it. And that's it.[820.11][820.11](laughing)
Did you have any ex parte...
No, nothing. Maybe similar to Varvage, just kind of talking in general with people in my life, but not anything with the owners or anything with the business district.
Okay, thank you for... We just need to, for the record, you know, let the public know that we've been thinking about this. So as we open up the deliberation, I just wanted to take a few minutes to review where we are, what our purpose is at this time. We are looking at the conditional, the application or request for a conditional use permit, and there has been some concern about whether this use is allowed in the Central Business District. I thoroughly researched our zoning ordinances, the general plan, and I know that there is a feeling among some members of the public that somehow this is prohibited. However, I... No one has been able to state where that occurs in our ordinances, and we, as planning commissioners, are bound to uphold those.
She's holding something.
Would you... I wish you had presented that during public comment. Mr. Rivas, I'm not sure what this person is bringing up. Is that... I don't want to fall out of form.
You as a chair, you do... That's your prerogative to reopen the public hearing, but then you have to give everyone else a chance that hasn't spoken yet to speak. You would open up the public hearing and then close the public hearing.
Okay. I am... It's eight o'clock at night. Thank you very much for your advice. It's eight o'clock at night. I'm sorry. I'm not sure why you did not step up to the podium when we had the public hearing, and I'm going to stand by my statement that through my research of the ordinances and based on the information that was provided in the staff report, the... This use is allowed in the Central Business District. So moving on...
It's a letter that was turned...
I'm sorry, ma'am. You had ample opportunity to step up to the podium, and I am... We've already kind of bleved over into the deliberative side before this point. We've closed the public hearing, and it's now time for the commissioners to deliberate on the issue at hand, based on the evidence that has been presented. So back to conditional use permit. According to our ordinance and state law, a conditional use permit application must pass a three-part test. This is specifically listed in our city code section 10-3-3. And I'd just like to give my summary of this request and my perspective based on my research in the staff report. The first part of the test is whether this use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and I think that we've heard enough information. I think the applicant has presented that. We've heard from the public that this is actually a desirable use, and it is a use that's similar to one that has been there previously. Residents and visitors alike come to our Central Business District to get food and refreshments. The second part is that the use that's proposed must be in harmony with various elements or objectives of the city general plan. And again, it's my opinion, and commissioners, I just want to give my summary, and you've... Anyway, we'll discuss this fuller, more fully, but it's a restaurant offering sandwiches, soups, salads, beverages, and it's very similar to what Centro was doing. And the general plan expressly promotes a broad range of pedestrian-oriented commercial uses, and it promotes the expansion of our commercial services to meet the needs of residents and visitors. I believe that the proposed use is in harmony with these elements and objectives. The use must not be detrimental to the surrounding property, and I believe this part of the test is also met. The site, the proposed use is not different from what has been there before and what takes place in other businesses in the Central Business District. There are no changes to the exterior that are proposed, except for the change in the signage from Centro to Sour Dough &amp; Company. And I think we've had some indication from the applicant that there is quite a bit of leeway in the look of that signage, and I'm encouraged... I had some thoughts on this that I want to get to in a moment after I hear from my fellow commissioners about how we can incorporate that into our conditions for your permit. Secondly, we are looking at the site plan review, and as stated in our staff report, and it's my opinion that it does meet the criteria listed in our zoning ordinance for the site plan review, specifically no changes to the exterior proposed. It's going to essentially look the same as it did for 10 years since they extensively remodeled it on behalf of the Centro Coffee Shop. The only issue is the signage, and again, I think I'd like to pick this up after I've heard some comments from Commissioner Leffler and Commissioner Reins. So given that summary, I think where we are right now, I'd like to hear your opinions and some move forward.
Sure. Well, I'll echo a lot of the things that you said because those were a lot of similar thoughts that went through my brain when I was processing through both the application, the ordinances, and how they all came together. I agree with you that it does fit in line with the different conditional use permit requirements, as well as the site plan review in the sense that it's not redoing the building. The sign has been on my mind, too, as being very bold in that area, and I think that being amendable to changing would be important because I do think that no matter what company goes in there, we would like a sign that people would like to take pictures in front of, right? Whether it was formula or, you know, just any kind of... You want something that's attractive, and it's not that I think it's disattractive, but I could see how it could be enhanced to make it feel a little bit more authentic to downtown Placerville and the historic nature of that. I do agree that with someone who said that this is actually, to me, it's kind of a local success story. I do view it as being, yes, it's a formula business. Yes, you clearly have the desire and intention to grow, but I kind of think it's a cool thing to... I'd not heard of it before, really, not been really on my radar. I know about the one in Missouri flat, but it wasn't really something that was in my life. And the more I look into it, I do think it's kind of a cool story, and I do think it would be interesting to have that here if a local business decided they wanted to start growing and franchising. You know, kind of tricky, you know? Does that become a formula business? Is that in line? But kind of just going back to what you said, I do think that it does meet the criteria as listed in our ordinances, and if the ordinances are going to be looked at, I think that's great. That's fine. Let's take a look at them. But right now, as the ordinance are written, I didn't see a reason... I don't have any major issues, except to say I do agree that the signage could be improved in order to give a much more, kind of just more in-line look with the look of the town. And if that's okay with the company, then I think that's great.
I think we can hammer out a change to the conditions that is acceptable to us as well as the applicant and the commission...
Oh, sorry. My question to staff, I guess, would be around the signage. Would there be a secondary review if we were to put a condition on signage? Or would that go then just directly to the permit development office?
Well, in the past, the commissions have, I guess, responded... Respond to your question in the way previous members have approached conditions. In many cases, those conditions are hammered out tonight where it's clear, it's clear to the applicant that they move forward with the design concept as expressed by the members. But also, I've been present where commission wants the, or at least give the applicant the ability to hear and consider the comments tonight and come back to you with a revised plan before the city, you, approve the sign package for the site, as we would call such a request. So it's been done both ways, and it's quite common to allow an applicant to come back at an upcoming meeting where they can explain and show you the sign elevations for you to approve, so that that is a possibility, absolutely.
Would that second presentation of the modified design, that wouldn't hold up the issuing of the conditional use permit so that they could proceed in confidence that their business is generally allowed?
That's correct. You could, in theory, approve the conditional use permit tonight and the site plan review with the caveat that before occupancy of the building, perhaps, that the signage must come back before you for final approval, and then, once you approve it, then the applicant would submit their sign details to the building division where building and planning would review those in accordance with the approved sign plan that you approved, and then the permit would be issued, and then the applicant would go forward with actually constructing that sign and placing it on the building, requesting inspections, and getting a final.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that, Commissioner Reins.
Well, question. If we were to have a vote and we wanted the sign modified and we put that in the motion, that's not a contract. And if the owner came back with modifications, but we didn't agree with them, can we stop the project?
You could deny their sign package.
But you couldn't deny the use of the building or the pro-ho product.
You know, technically, a tenant wouldn't, doesn't necessarily have to have an outward expression of their business. It probably wouldn't be fruitful not to have a business identification for their business, but I guess in theory, you wouldn't need it... You don't need a sign to operate the business if you approve the use.
Okay. My mother was Native American, and I know a lot of...
If I can interject one more thing, it would behoove the applicant to come back with a design that you would approve, so...
We would hope so, wouldn't we?
So that there could be several iterations, perhaps, that come back before you, before approval.
Where I'm coming from, my mother was Native American, and we talked a lot about the history of the 500 nations, and in the Eric Coin Nation, they made a decision based on how it would affect the next seven generations. I take this seriously, and I think we have an ethical and moral obligation to think of seven generations in the future for Placerville and what is going to go in here. I also take it seriously that we are part of the historical advisory policy for the city now, since it was incorporated into the planning commission. I think we are on a slippery slope here, but here's my main issue. I have no objection to the company. Your food is delicious, okay? But I... There's 13 stores within a 50-mile radius of here, and I pulled them all up, and they're all identical. They're all in shopping centers, not downtown areas, and they all have identical signage and big red chairs in front, but that's another issue. My issue is, and again, I'm going to go through your analysis like I started earlier on page four, the community design element is to promote development of aesthetic and functional signage and reduce visual clutter and contribute to the character and sense of historical and cultural identity. I don't... I have issue or trouble with this building or the signage contributing to historical and cultural identity, particularly since that building is built in the mid-1800s. By the way, does the owner know that there's a ghost in the basement? Nobody's talked about the basement yet. When my kids were in high school, one of their friends worked there for the bakery, and he used to tell me that he heard the ghost, and the basement's not mentioned, but I guess that wasn't relevant. This bright red sign does not reduce visual clutter nor contribute to the character and sense of historical and cultural identity, in my view. The zoning consistency, item G2E, that is not detrimental to surrounding property. Well, they won't see... People won't see the surrounding property because the people's focus are going to be on that large red sign. I live on the east end of town, and when I drive through town every day, the first thing I see is Mel's great, big, huge red sign. So now it would be somebody seeing another big red sign, another big red sign through the bell tower. Also, on page five, it talks about the colors are contrary to the historic small-town character as they need to be earth-toned in lieu of bright, glossy, or reflective colors. So the building design needs to be harmonious to site and surrounding area. The use of this standard bright, bold, glossy, non-earth tones is discouraged. It says so in your ordinance. And this sign would also be lit up and visible at night. So in essence, historic downtown Placerville 24/7 would have a brightly lit red sign. Page seven of your analysis, the Main Street historic area, it says, "No color selection should demonstrate..." The color selection should demonstrate harmony and continuity with the buildings and the surroundings. That's my comments on your analysis. Now, my comments on the ordinance, page two, number three. It shall be... Item four, it should be planned to achieve harmony and continuity between neighborhoods and commercial areas to maintain the historic foothill, small-town character. Item seven, section 10-49G4E, the colors shall be harmonious to site and surrounding area. The use of the standardized bright, bold, glossy, non-earth tones is discouraged as they generally do not project the historical foothill character of the community. And also, it says that they can't deviate from existing neutral colors and go into colors such as bone white, canary yellow, or fire engine red. That's the ordinance. I would frankly like to make a motion that we defer this vote until we have a full board because I think that it's exceedingly important... This issue is exceedingly important for not only the downtown district, but for future people who live in Placerville.
So Commissioner Reins, you're making a motion to...
I will make a motion that we defer the decision on this. I don't want it to be on the shoulders of three people. It's too important. I don't want it to be on the shoulders of three people, it's too important, that we defer this decision tonight until we have a full planning commission board.
Because you think that the other two people would have more insight, or offer... I guess, the quorum is here, so I guess I'm curious what would be added to having two more people here.
I think, actually, the procedure would be to ask for a second for that, to postpone the vote. And then afterwards, we could discuss and take a vote on postponing it. I think that's the proper, according to Robert's rules, right?
A motion's on the table, yes.
A motion's on the table, we need a second before we can fully discuss it. Thank you.
And me, not...
You don't have to second it, if you are not in favor of it.
Yes, second it doesn't mean that you favor either argument, it's just to allow for discussion.
It would open it up for further discussion, then we would take a vote after that.
Okay, so I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Okay, let's just, then we'll discuss the motion to postpone the vote until a date certain, or...
Till we can have a full, five-panel planning commission. John List and Michael Friend have been on the board. They're intelligent, they're competent, they're well-versed on many... I'm a newbie, and you're a newbie. I depend strongly on their input and their advice, and would feel much more comfortable with their input and their commentary.
Madam Chair, if staff could make a comment on that. Basically, it's important for the planning commission to understand that we're regulated by the Permit Streamlining Act, and also, we do have an applicant that has, you know, paid monies, staff report prepared, we're going through what's commonly known as due process for the application. We have a quorum, so legally, you're able to take action on this item that's a legally, publicly noticed, agendized item. And so, staff would just question the discretion of the planning commission to defer based on requiring five members, where many times, we go lots of meetings where we don't have the full membership, but we do have a quorum. And so, I just caution the planning commission for that.
You actually summarized my feelings and my thoughts on this very succinctly here. I don't, I think the matter, the facts are before us. I think that we are rational, educated people, and quite capable. I have a lot of confidence in your ability to make the right decision this evening, and I'm sorry, the... No, Mr. Smith, you must sit down. I'm sorry, we have closed public comment, and this is a matter before the planning commission. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you respecting, you know, our process here. And now, to, back to the matter at hand, Commissioner Rains, I, you know, I agree completely with what Mr. Rebus has just said about, we have an applicant who has money on the line, has a project, we have the information, and we also are on track to create an additional condition on the conditional use permit that I think is very strong and binding regarding the signage. And honestly, that is the sticking point, and it's a concern of mine. I appreciate your summary, and what I see from what you, Commissioner Rains provided us, a summary of her comments, repeatedly, it's the sign, and I see you not, yet, that is what, the one thing that I had a hard time, you know, getting, you know, resigning myself, I guess is the way I want to put it.
I agree with you, yeah. And I think, well, do we have to vote on that motion?
Yes, the motion's been...
We still have, we're still having discussion.
I'd like to let Commissioner Lepper speak.
Oh, just that, like I said, I think the sign is something that has come up over and over, it came up immediately to me, sounds like it came up to you guys as well, and I think the fact that the company is ready and willing and able, because a lot of people can't change their signage. If they were McDonald's, if they were Taco Bell, they would have no choice but to come in and have their standard corporate signage, it's, that's just the rule, right? And so, the fact that they're willing to do that, and then we can make that condition, I think that that would be a really, as stated by a member of the public, a nice compromise that will bring in a strong company, and also, a local company that is growing, and then also, but make it so that the appearance, the outward appearance, which I keep hearing is coming up, and they're not changing the outside of the building, so there's one thing that's changing, and it sounds like we can all come together to make that more copacetic between everyone involved.
Well put.
Okay.
Any further comments?
Well, only that, and I guess, Mr. Rebus, if we make a motion that they reconfigure the sign or whatever, it's still only a recommendation, it's not a contract.
It's a condition of the CUP.
Okay, so then if they did that, and it didn't meet the historical aesthetics of the community, then it could be turned down?
The commission would evaluate the resubmital for accordance with all of the codes provisions that I've outlined in the staff report, and so, a decision would be made, findings would be made, whether the signage was consistent or not. So, it would give the applicant the ability to come back with a sign plan that might be acceptable to the membership.
Because I do think of the ice cream parlor, and how wonderful it is to walk in there and see something historical, and to stand outside and see something historical, including the hangman, and the historical maintenance of downtown district is where my main issues are. Thank you.
Staff can just make another couple of comments. I think it's important, too, that the planning commissioners recognize the differences between the criteria that staff use to evaluation regarding the building versus the sign. They're very different. The planning commission has much broader discretion on the building, as opposed to the sign. Typically, staff in the city is limited when it's a registered trademark. Staff did research the sign, and it is a registered trademark, but we did review other signage in other communities for the sourdough and company, and it did very broadly. For example, the applicant mentioned they have a wooden sign in Eldorado Hills. We looked in another city where the sign was white, not red, so clearly, there was some discretion there. When staff looked, and Mr. Painter can correct me if I miss some of the finer points, what's registered is sourdough and company, with some, I guess, a line that's above and below the sourdough and company. So, you have broad discretion on not allowing the sandwiches, soups, and salads, that's not part of the registered trademark.
The list of the three menu items, okay.
Yeah, the menu items, so you have discretion there. Also, color was not mentioned, and so, red is not part of that registered trademark, as far as we could see when we looked it up. So, I just want to just give that to the commission, that your purview of the signage is fairly broad, but you couldn't change the font of sourdough, or you couldn't change the sourdough and company with the dot, and that kind of thing.
But the way it looks would be changed, then, so it would be on wood, but it would still say sourdough.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, all right.
So technically, we have a motion on the table, it's been seconded, so action needs... Would you like me to call the question?
Repeat the motion.
The motion, as you presented, was to postpone the vote, and we had a second from Commissioner Lepper, so let's take, do we need a voice vote, or just up-down?
For the record, if you'd like to do roll call, we could certainly do roll call. Member Rains?
Yes.
Chair Keeney?
No.
Member Lepper?
No.
Okay, so the, now let's... So we will proceed and try to take action. I think it's important for the commission to be active and to give a reply to our applicant. Is there any further discussion that you'd like to bring up, Commissioner Lepper? We haven't heard much. Do you have any other concerns that haven't been already brought up?
No, a lot of the things that were already on my radar, what we've been discussed, and what we've heard from the public as well, and so, I think I'm kind of pretty clear on where they are.
Okay, great. Well, at this time, I'd like to discuss adding a different, an additional condition to the use permit, and it's kind of tied in with the site plan review. I had, because this concerned me, I took the liberty of typing up some proposed changes, and one of them was regarding the signage. I hesitate to hand this out to you right now, because it has something else at the top regarding one of the findings. So, I'll just go ahead and give you each a copy, and I just ask that you look at the second item, listed number five. So this would be what I...
Madam Chairman, are you intending to read this? Because that would be helpful for our public.
Attempting to read my, right, well...
Just so that they have an understanding.
We've kind of passed over what I had already suggested. It would be, excuse me, it's, this would be item number five on attachment one, conditions of approval for the conditional use permit in site plan review from our staff report. So we have four conditions of approval already. This would be, what I'm asking us to craft right now is a condition five, and then we can hopefully roll this into a motion to approve or deny the recommendation, or the request as a whole. What I had suggested originally was to simply minimize the signage for sourdough and company to remove the listing of the menu items, but I'm really encouraged that the applicant is amendable to doing something that's really more site-specific. So, I'm going to back off. Member Rains, you really have some strong opinions like, for this, and I'd like to hear, what elements do you think are most important? What would you like that sign to look like for sourdough and company? So essentially, I'm envisioning something that just reads sourdough and company. What would it look like? What colors? What kind of lighting would you like to see?
I like the muted bronze colors that Centro has.
Bronze?
I'm just saying, the muted colors that Centro has, right now, that doesn't jump off. I mean, the elephant in the room is that any sign that's there, every single person that ever takes a picture of the bell tower will then have a picture of this signage, and they will have free publicity, but Centro didn't have that, because their colors were harmonious and met the palette requirements that's in your paperwork. I mean, I might as well tell you upfront, what in the world's bothering me, and that was one of the things that was bothering me. And you have to realize, I taught the psychology of marketing and advertising, so I recognized that possibility.
Commissioner Lepper? I was just asking, you're wondering about the, you think that the Centro sign is the color palette that you think is appropriate for that?
The ordinance, our ordinance itself says that the colors must be muted, and must fit in with the surrounding, which is exactly what Centro's is, because it's kind of a bronze and brownish thing. You can see it, you can read it, but it doesn't jump out of the page. I have other concerns about the outdoor seating and stuff, but that can't be discussed unless that's brought before the board.
On top of, for that permit.
I even have a question, that the store on Missouri Flat Road has a great big sign hanging out right now that says, "Now hiring." Are you planning on doing that? Anyway, I guess that's another issue I'll have to pull back.
Okay, I'm jotting down some notes in hopes of crafting a new proposed addition.
If I can offer some, perhaps, some way to move this along, perhaps, the topics related to the sign, illumination, knot, dimensions, location on the building, maybe those things should be discussed as well, unless you all are fine with the current, the proposed location, but not necessarily the colors proposed. So I guess I'll offer you, if there's issues with the location of the sign and/or the illumination, you can handle those as well during your discussion.
You mean, address them in how...
Yeah, in your condition, so the applicant clearly knows what it is that they need to build.
Yeah, I think what I'm struggling with with the sign part is that I haven't seen the Eldorado one, to see what, the only one I know is, oh, yeah, maybe I could see a picture or something, but I, I've only seen the, I don't know.
I found the founder.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the image you guys are talking about is what we're seeing.
There's, there's...
Captain Frank Morgan.
I don't know.
Yeah, they're shared, maybe the same photo.
The same photo.
I think, rather than settle on a final design, perhaps, we should allow the applicant to develop something, given the, you know, parameters that we've listed here, and return to, for our approval.
I agree, yeah, because I'd like to see some options of what they think might be, work with their, you know, look, and then also come in and see what they kind of come up with. I'm no designer myself, that's not how my brain works, and how it looks to me, so I think that seeing what ideas someone who comes up with an actual new design would be really helpful to see, and maybe even come up with something different than, you know, they've done, and more unique, and more appropriate to Placerville.
But when did they, you want them to come up with this, these examples?
Well, timeline, I'm not sure how that kind of works.
Mr. Painter suggested prior to occupancy, so we would allow them to set the schedule.
So it's after the vote, and after they were approved to have the culture, the permit?
So we would issue the permit, but also say, if it's not approved, if your signage doesn't come back approved, then you don't get a sign.
So if we came back, that if the signage isn't approved, then the program is totally kaput?
The sign.
Right, they wouldn't be able to put a sign on the wall.
The sign on the wall, okay.
If they didn't get approval by you, and subsequent reviewed by us during the permit process, the city would not authorize the placement of a sign on the building.
But they would...
So it behooves them to come back before you, to create a design that you all will approve.
Right.
And they would proceed with the business?
They could do that.
I mean, it's a good business.
Yeah, my understanding is they will be doing some tenant improvements inside the building to accommodate their use, so, yeah.
Watch out for that ghost.
Well, then...
I guess the wording, it would be, how do we word that part?
I'd like to change that number five to read, or, so our fifth...
Condition.
Condition would be, signage would be limited to that in the original application, 30 inches tall by 14 feet, 10 and 1/2 inches long. Let's see, text of the side would read, "Simply sourdough and company, with no list of menu items included. Sign would be in preferred earth tones and muted colors, and the applicant will return the proposed sign package to the planning commission for approval prior to occupancy." Have I captured your concerns, and what you think we should, is a fair condition?
If that language protects us in terms of having the final authority on it, and that it gives them the timeline and everything, that's good.
Okay. And, Mr., were you able to, you got it all? Wow, you are quick.
Not every word, but we'll, I'll listen back, and we'll get it all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Let's, I would also like to discuss the change in the proposed finding H from the staff report. My concern with that is, I just wanted to stick closely to the language of our ordinance. We've had some vague references to legal action, and I just think it puts the planning commission and the city in a stronger position to, you know, rebut any, you know, what's the word, rebut any challenge to our decision. My proposed language for number, for letter H, the finding, would read, "The request is..." These are the findings, "The request is not detrimental to the surrounding property of the site, as no architectural changes are proposed, and signage meets guidelines established by the city. The business would be operationally similar to that of Central Coffee, the business which occupied the site for more than a decade, and which is similar to other restaurants in the central business district zone, offering menu options of sandwiches, soups, salads, and beverages." I realize that this is not that different from what staff proposed, but as I explained, I just feel like we're sticking a little closer to the requirements as stated in our ordinance 103-3. Comments?
I've made all my comments.
Sorry, I'm just reading through to see the difference of what, I don't have any standout opposition to how you boarded it there.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's clarifying, and it's just very similar.
Okay, thank you. And I have a copy of that, Ms. And I have a copy of that, Mr. Painter, I can provide, so you don't have to jot it or listen to the tape again. Okay, any other concerns to discuss about this?
Only the things that I've said before, that I'm deeply concerned about maintaining the historical image of Placerville, particularly the downtown area, and I have some concerns, that's all.
I, I think we all appreciate that and I appreciate the research you did and the insight that you provided during this hearing and I just agree that it is important to maintain our historical character of downtown.
Yeah, I think it's tricky to say, you know, what qualifies as only being able to be approved to go in there and maintain that character. I think that's a tricky thing too.
And I think it's...
You know, so I could have, you know, does it have to be a Wild West picture taken? You know what I mean? Like, I think it could get a little tricky to be, to have to hold to that. I greatly value the historical nature of Placerville. It's one of the things I love about it, it's one of the things that brought me here, but I think, as stated in some of the comments and things, the need for businesses that can bring people, bring interest and help the economy to thrive here and really support it, I think that that is important. And I think with the change to the signage, I don't even know, again, sourdough and co wasn't really on my radar, so if I wasn't involved in this way in the city, I might just think it's something going up, I'm not sure. So, I don't think it screams that to people and I think the sign changing will make it to fit Placerville's look much better.
Let's also be careful that we don't set a precedent that then would, future businesses would be able to build on our decisions. You know, Grass Valley and Nevada City are very large historical towns and our historical town is shrinking and that's a concern for me.
I think it's important for us to have thriving businesses and that also reflect our past that we all find very important to the character of the city. So, it's late at this time, I would like to make a motion that we take the recommended action as described in the staff report. We adopt this staff report and make it part of the public record. We find that this project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, that we make the findings as listed in the staff report, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, with the change to finding H that we had already discussed and have read aloud, and I'll provide that copy to you momentarily, Mr. Painter, and then finding H. And that therefore, we, based on our findings, we approve the conditional use permit 19-01 and the site plan review 19-01 with the caveat, as we described, of adding a fifth condition of approval regarding the signage, that it will be limited and it will be in the earth tones and it will come back to the Planning Commission for approval prior to occupancy. That's a lengthy motion, do I have a second?
Could you repeat the motion for me, please? You were going so fast, I want to write it down.
Well, it's 8:30 and it's getting on to my bedtime, so I apologize for rushing through.
I can't vote on something I can't read or can't see the completeness of it.
Well, it's on page eight of our staff report.
I just want to know your motion.
My motion is to, to summarize, is to...
Make your motion.
Is to take the action recommended in our staff report with just the two minor changes to finding H as we...
To what H?
Finding H.
Finding H, what page?
That is on page nine and we would use the language that's at the top of that page.
Okay. Take action on the staff report and including, then what about the finding H on page whatever?
Page nine, so we would change that finding.
Change.
And then, we would also include the change to the signage in that it would be limited in size and it would be in earth tones and muted colors and that the applicant would return with their proposed signed package to the Planning Commission for approval prior to occupancy of the premises.
Thank you.
Okay, so that is the motion summarized?
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's take a voice vote, Mr. Painter.
There was a question at staff.
Oh, okay.
We noticed that in the motion it did not mention any illumination related to the signage. Do you have a, do you have an issue with that? Because that's kind of direction to the applicant, whether or not illumination was a component of your condition.
Internal illumination, outside illumination, or any illumination?
What do we want?
Yes, any, any.
Oh, okay.
We want it to be illuminated, not illuminated, what do we, what would we like to direct them to put into their signed package?
Do we know about hours that they'll be open?
I believe I read that the hours are essentially 11 to 5.
Will they be the same, 7?
Okay.
But they said this outside signage would be lit up 24/7.
The, I believe the lighting for Placerville News is also on 24/7, is that correct?
I don't know Placerville News, but you as the commission can regulate the time and the duration of illumination of signage as part of the site plan review process.
Okay, so, an amendment to Condition Five regarding illumination.
Again, we bring this up so the applicant knows what to bring back to you.
I know there's, we mentioned projection, maybe some, you know, projection onto it, there's also back illumination. Do you have a preference on that?
On what?
The illumination, whether it would be like a light that kind of hooks over and projects onto the sign or whether it would be backlit more like what Centro looks like?
I'm not a signage specialist, so I can't answer that question, I just don't want it to be the...
It's more of an aesthetic.
I don't want it to be the main thing I see when I drive downtown Placerville at nighttime.
So, at nighttime, so that's a separate issue, that it would be illuminated only during business hours? You don't seem to...
Well, I, you know, the stores downtown, I guess, are lit, I don't know, don't nail my hide to the door. I just don't want it to be the main thing that every single person that comes into town sees when it's a historical area. That's my main concern. So, the lighting has to be muted in some way, 24/7.
I mean, you have to have illumination, right? It gets dark at 4:30 in the afternoon in the winters, so it would be inappropriate to say you can't have any lighting on your sign.
That's right, I'm not, that's not where I'm coming from.
No, no, no.
And I haven't, I haven't driven downtown at nighttime, but trust me, tonight I will. I don't know what's lit up at nighttime.
That was going to be my secondary point is, I don't have, I don't think I have enough information about what the other sign lighting rules are right now that I could feel like I can make a, like, you can, you have to turn your sign off at 11 because I'd like a little bit more information about that.
Well, maybe I can shed some light. There is, there are very few businesses downtown that have gone through the site plan review process, many of them predate, predate that zoning component, so they're not subject to that. But you certainly have that purview as part of the site plan review ordinance. You can regulate that illumination.
Well, Commissioner Rains, your point about seeing it when you come downtown at night, that was a concern I had also when it was, when I was thinking of what was proposed, the red and in conflict with the bell tower. So, I, I am in favor of limiting the illumination of the sign. Now, they may come back with something that's actually very good-looking. We may want to say that it can be on a little bit outside of operational hours.
Would it be appropriate to make a decision on the illumination when we have the signage in front of us?
I think we should give them some direction now.
I'm very hesitant to say 8:00 PM illumination is out right now after just talking about this and having had a lot of discussion today and thoughts and things, I'm really hesitant to make a finding on illumination right now.
Okay.
We could maybe wrap that into that condition and know that illumination will obviously be a factor because I don't think it can't be, but we'll then look at how we want to regulate that. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be my preference.
I'd like to ask the applicant to come up and just give us a little, one of your thoughts. You know, we don't want to drag this process out too long for you, I understand you need to have, please step to the podium, please.
So...
What do you feel about illuminating your sign outside of business hours?
Well, we've, well, we'd like it lit sometime outside of our business hours, we don't need it 24/7. Also, our restaurants, you know, have a window 10:30 to 7:00 that they need to be open. Some of our restaurants are open till 9:00. So, some of them choose to because if Placerville's busy on Friday and Saturday night until 9:00, they will stay, they'll stay open and they'll change their business hours.
Right.
But, so as far as the lighting's concerned, you know, front lit and I think you could probably just put in there soft lighting, soft toned lighting as a general, I mean, that will, that will give us direction, then we can come back to you with something that is soft toned lit, but it probably will be front lit, but it could be backlit, but it'd be softer.
There's also a thing called halo lighting that they do. They can put halo lighting, so softer lighting, you could put behind the letters, it has a softer look, okay? And then, the other thing Dave mentioned was the gooseneck.
Yes, the gooseneck.
The gooseneck, we could keep the earth colors and maybe the gooseneck, you know, to make them look authentic and antique, we could do them in some kind of, I know you don't like red, but red is a typical color of a gooseneck. But they would be very subtle and then have their earth tone. But the halo lighting may be the softer approach. And depending, you know, on the hours of operation, like Placerville has events that go late, we may want to extend our hours. You know, we don't want to be locked in to 7:00. That's our normal operating hours, but sometimes, you know, like Placerville, you guys have events going on late, you know, we'd want to be open.
I had read in your application that typical business hours were 11 to 5, so that's, I didn't know if you had decided on operational hours.
What we'd really like to do is do several mockups, so you could look at them and, you know, and say, yeah, we'd like, we like this one or we don't like that one, give you several options. We're going to be easy to get along with, as long, I know you're reasonable, we're going to come up with something that you're going to like. But, you know, I think we need to do maybe three or four mockups, so you have some different choices to look at.
Yeah, I'd really appreciate that.
Yes, I would too.
Impossible by you.
It's hard for us to envision, you know, what it might look like.
And you have your fee, but you might say, okay, I like this, but, you know, whatever. And then, we can go back to the drawing board and I think that we can come up with something that'll work for everybody.
Okay, then, let's see, I would like to amend our Condition Five.
Can you just repeat the whole thing that we're voting on?
First, let's capture what we've got here for the lighting, since that was a question of staff. We have that the signage will be limited to the size in the original application with using the preferred earth tones and muted colors. Illumination will be soft toned lighting with front light, gooseneck lights preferred and the applicant will return the proposed signed package to the Planning Commission for approval prior to occupancy. I think I've, thank you so much for providing me some, you know, technical words to use there and does that address staff's concern about the, okay?
And it provides direction to the applicant.
Gives you direction and it gives us some options so that we're not boxed in with one. So, now, with the amended motion before us, do I have to get another second because we changed this? I need a second for our amended motion.
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you.
I thought you were asking a question.
Okay, so, they're not...
No, no, no.
So, we have motion, a second and any further discussion?
No.
All right, Mr. Painter, would you please call roll?
Member Rains.
Abstain.
Vice Chair Keeney.
Yes.
Member Lopper.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes two with one abstention. Okay, well, I think we made really good progress. I thank everyone for your patience working with us. This is new territory for many of us here, including staff. I just mentioned that this is the first time they've been through, first time a business has been through this extensive of a site plan review. So, that closes item six and we will move on to the rest of the agenda.
I forgot about that.
We have, see, number seven, we have no continued items and there's no new business before the commission tonight. That moves item nine matters from commissioners and staff. I'd like to ask staff if there's other matters we need to be made aware of so that the commissioners can take a break for a moment.
Yes, the main one is some housekeeping items related to, the next scheduled meeting is National Night Out, which is the first Tuesday in August. Traditionally, this body has gone silent, which means you don't meet and that allows all of you to go participate in your community's neighborhood events, so we encourage you to do that. So, there will be no meeting, we're not having a meeting on this evening. The next scheduled meeting would be, would be two weeks later. We do have a public hearing, at least one item for that agenda, so that item will, the public notice will be going out the next probably week or so. That's all I've got, apparently Director Rebus might have some more.
I have one item. I believe staff had brought this to the commission at your last meeting, but I want, or maybe the meeting before that, but the city council did give direction to staff regarding the city looking at further restricting formula business within the central business district. So, they basically have asked staff to come to the planning commission. We will also be going before the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee to get a recommendation on whether or not to either do a full ban or further restrict the establishment of a formula business within the central business district.
Any idea on the timeline of that or is that we're just beginning to look at it?
Staff is putting together sort of a discussion paper on it. We're looking at different cities, we're looking at, for example, the city of Carmel, which is probably the most restrictive. In fact, I think you have more than two businesses that are identical, that's a formula business in their review and they, they have a complete ban citywide. And then, we've been looking closely at the city of San Francisco, in particular, North's Beach. North Beach has been in the news as of late within the Chronicle, so we've been following that, a lot of discussion with the city. There's a ban on formula business within the North Beach District, but that's also, that district has the highest vacancy rate of any of the districts in the city, higher than most, and so they're looking at that, whether or not they feel that it's that restriction that's causing that, but most of the arguments seem to state that it keeps the rents low so that the independent businesses can thrive. And also, that ban extends to all formula business, so, at least in the article that I read, Bank of America was cited as being a formula business. They originally started as Bank of Italy, for those that understand the history.
That's right.
So, they started in the city of San Francisco. But anyways, they are a formula business, but they were grandfathered in because of course they were there before the ban, but that would extend to all businesses, so, again, we would like to come with a discussion paper. We may exempt certain types of institutional businesses such as banks, maybe we'll just tailor it to eateries and restaurants and bars, that kind of thing. But anyways, it'll be a lively discussion and hopefully we can get some good recommendations that we can take to council and then council will hopefully adopt a resolution intent to amend the code and will amend the code to further define how we want to allow formula businesses within our CBD zone.
I think since it's been, since 2004, that's important and good.
And the thing to remember...
You know.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you didn't cut me off, I was just agreeing that I think that if we're going to have these kinds of things come up, that it's good that we're going to look at it.
And the thing to remember, unfortunately, our audience has left.
Yeah, always.
The way, the way the director has outlined what's going forward, there will be ample opportunities for the public to participate in not only your discussion, economic development, of course, at city council, back to you if they move forward with recommending that we, staff, start moving forward with those changes. So, my point in saying this, the public's going to have an opportunity to provide input.
Yeah, good.
Very good.
I do have one comment I do want to make and I don't, I don't want to forget to mention this, but there was a speaker that sort of challenged staff on not providing adequate notice and I do want to make it clear that we do notify all property owners within 500 feet of the application. We also provide the agenda and notification to the PDA and the PDA is instructed to send that off to all their members, which is my understanding...
that off to all their members, which is my understanding that they do, and so that should capture all of the business owners, or at least all the business owners then, that are members of the PDA. And then we also have a, quite a large number of subscriptions that we maintain, so anybody can request to receive a subscription, and therefore we'll email them a copy of the agenda so there's some notice. So we go through quite an extensive amount of noticing, so I wanted the commission to be aware of that.
I, thank you for summarizing that, that I really take those comments with a grain of salt. I think some people, if it's mailed to them, maybe they don't realize what it is, or they don't pay, or they even forget that they read it. So I just, you know, I advise my fellow commissioners to do the same, because I know the city does an extensive job, it's actually expensive and expensive, trying to notify all the parties involved, and you do your absolute, you know, level best, probably go beyond that. So, thank you, and, yeah, I, I know that you try, I just, I, I feel like during public comment, I really can't refute that, you know, the person says they didn't hear about it, I really, you know, I wasn't there at the mailbox, so, thank you. Do the commissioners have any thing for staff?
Was this an agenda that you're discussing?
Yes.
Yes, we're at item nine on the, on the agenda, matters from commissioners and staff?
I heard that you were discussing the historic, the historic district. No? Wasn't discussion of that?
No, we're just working our way through the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, well, seeing no other.
You have one thing for staff?
Oh, go ahead, please turn on your microphone.
Please send an email tomorrow letting me know what I just voted on. I couldn't write that fast, and I couldn't write everything down, and I'd like to see the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I apologize, I thought that we had clarified it, essentially it was the.
I wanted to write it down verbatim so I could, I'm a visual learner, so I wanted to visually see precisely what I was voting on.
I, I understand, and I'll try to, you know, I handed that out, my proposed changes to you, but then we ended up changing number five anyway, so, yeah, it is kind of difficult to capture, it is a moving target.
I was clear.
Okay, and I, yeah, well, this meeting went on a long time, and I appreciate you being forthright, and, you know, we'll, we'll do better next time. Given that, I, I need a motion to, do I need a motion? I adjourn this meeting, gavel, 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 it is 8:55.